Okay. All right. We're gonna get started, thank you everybody. We're gonna get started now. Thank you. Hello. I will. Okay. There we go. Okay, gotta do it. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, and will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Dr. Freemster.
Here.
Veronica Frankel, absent. Katie Holland.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
John Mayer, here. Melina Raymond.
Here.
And Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
And a student hasn't been appointed yet.
All right.
We do have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I did want to convey Trustee Frankel's apologies for not being here. She is otherwise detained for an employment issue, so she conveyed her regrets. Okay. Chief Trevino, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Next item on our agenda is public comment. JJ, do we have public comment for this portion?
Yes. Charlene Marks.
Ms. Marks? Okay. You have three minutes.
Okay. I came and talked to you guys, hello, last year, in November, because I had 38 students in my sixth grade class, and I was asking for some sort of help, and I got it, thank you so very much. I received a teacher assistant. She wasn't able to start till January, but that's a whole semester that helped me out and the students helped out. So I wanted to thank you very much for that, because it relieved a little bit of stress on my part. Secondly, I just, actually, I spoke to Mrs. Holland. No. And you? Mrs. Taylor?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You guys were at my school, our school, and you came through the lunchroom, and I spoke to you, and thanked you personally for that, and you said you would love to hear from teachers, et cetera, from the public. Well, I'm just gonna give you this, a little bit of info on this. You won't have very many teachers come and talk to you, and you will not have principals come and talk to you, because for 28 years, I wouldn't come and talk to you. And the reason being is, is if I come and talk to you, it gets put on the superintendent, it then goes to the area superintendent, who I don't know if she feels like, or he feels like they get their hands slapped or not, but then it comes down on the principal, and then it comes down on the teacher. The teacher pays. Okay? This did not happen to me. I had a wonderful experience trying to get my assistant, but through my experience of 28 years and seeing things happen to my fellow teachers, nobody in their right mind would come and talk to you, because it will roll down. It's kinda like if you're the oldest child, the baby always ends up with it, the teacher ends up with it, and then in turn hurts the kids because the teacher's so upset, et cetera. That's really what I wanted to say today, and I think you'll probably see more of me, because nothing can roll down on me, because I'm retired! So, as of June, I was retired, and now I'm just gonna come and be friends with you. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Appreciate that. And we certainly welcome teachers to make sure that their concerns are known to their principals and others first, and again, we love to have open communication and a culture of continuous improvement, so thank you.
Pat Danenberg.
Good afternoon, Mr. Danenberg.
Hi.
You have three minutes.
Welcome. President Holland and members of the Board, I appreciate your time and consideration today. As I address you, my name's Pat Danenberg, I'm the field director for the local Boy Scout Council here. I ask for your consideration to reconsider Policy 1140 as it pertains to community communications within the school district, particularly the ability for community organizations to distribute flyers inside schools. The new policy has been interpreted as no community organizations can send home materials or flyers. The new policy does allow for principals to each school send home education-related materials, yet the principals do not have to have a review or approval from the district communications office for any material. I understand that the school district weighed the expense of having to distribute flyers. Why was there not consideration given to charging a fee if the district had to distribute flyers to the schools? Are you aware that most community organizations try to limit any and all efforts to honor a school for sending home materials? Most groups take the flyer and get it approved by the school district office, and then count out the flyers into stacks and take them to the schools, not to the district. Most groups are then willing to take them into the school office and put them in each individual teacher's box. The flyers then go to the classrooms, and teachers already have a section of time set aside to deal with preparing a kid to organize a backpack and send them home for the day. One of the reasons for the Board used to change the policy was that the efforts were taxing the district on time and thus at cost. I fail to see that as taxing. I realize the Board may also be worried about a church wanting to send home materials. The prior policy had governance helping prevent religious materials from going home, and the policy could have been strengthened to further prevent religious discrimination. I know the Board has publicly shared it as really wanting to be more involved with the community organizations. Unfortunately, this policy change is the complete opposite. Families are responsible for raising a child. In today's world, we know that when there's not a mother or father, our community is there to help do that, in helping raise our kids. When the family structure is lacking, one of those that takes the help is the community to help make that family steady. Our public schools are owned and operated by the public and are owned by the community. Let us help not prevent us from sharing our message home to the parents. President Holland and the Board, I ask for you today to allow me to meet with one of you in the district communications department, and let me help you write a policy that will work for all and yet protect our principals, schools, and school district while we do this together. The current policy doesn't even have a plan for money, for an appeal, for an organization for which this simple statement can, in the long run, save money and time for the district. The new policy also removes guidance on what was appropriate if something goes home.
Wrap it up.
Okay. It also removes the statement of non-affiliation. This new policy hasn't helped our kids or protect our district, it may have set us up for more liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danenberg. And thank you for what your organization does for children, we appreciate that.
We do a lot for the district.
Yes, you do.
And, you know, this-
Mr. Danenberg, I have to, sorry.
Yep.
Jeff Church.
Mr. Church, you know you have three minutes.
Certainly. Good afternoon, folks. My name is Jeff Church. I am a candidate for the Washoe County School Board, District F, and I wore my recruiter shirt today, because I have a question, I do have a handout for you. My question basically involves the three new schools that are set to open almost exactly a year from today, and my question is, how are we going to pay for them and staff them? As running for school board, people ask me, where's the money coming from? And then as a recruiter, and I've taught classes for the Clark County School District, as well as nationwide, how are we gonna get the teachers, the warm bodies, the police officers, the bus drivers, et cetera? So A, where's the money gonna come from in a year from today? And B, where are we gonna get the warm bodies? So that's the first thing I wanted to address. The second thing, in your little handout, I apologize, I had at least three errors, so feel free to have one of the teachers mark it in red and return it to me, and I'll correct those. And darn spell check, it's not Nick Polcat's Elementary, I apologize, it's Nick Papadopoulos, I think I said that right?
No.
So, no, not even close, huh?
Not even close.
Well, I know it's not Polcat, so my darn spell checker. At any rate, the other issue I wanted to address is the capital projects auditor. As you probably know, the audit committee recommended that we hire an auditor, and you've concurred in that in some of your statements, and unfortunately, it got bogged down with the capital projects oversight committee. We're presently bonding millions of dollars from spending millions in price ranges up to $200 million, $200 million apiece for high schools, yet there has not been any full audit and no firm plans to hire an auditor. To be clear, we need a full-time auditor with unrestricted authority to look at the taxpayers' interests without having to ask permission from the capital projects oversight committee, or the Board, or anyone else. An auditor or watchdog should be independent and be able to look into any aspect of efficiency, best practices, waste, fraud, and abuse. They should be able to look at contracts and ensure that the school district capital project funds are being spent efficiently and properly. So I urge the Board to resolve any differences and act on this without delay. I note that, again, that the audit committee supported this. I don't have an opinion on whether it should be an internal auditor hired internally or an independent contract auditor, but either way, we just need an auditor soon to look at things, and they must have unfettered access to look at any kind of waste, fraud, and abuse. And I apologize for the typos and the mispronunciation, if you can help me with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Nick Polikatos.
That's all for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, we will bring it back to the Board, and our next item is action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Our next section are consent items, and I will call for, first of all, approval of the consent agenda items, but we need to have public comment first. Is there public comment, JJ?
Yes. Pam Barick.
Is that the right pronunciation of your last name?
You were close. Yeah, it's Pam Barick. You're very close.
Ms. Barick, welcome. Thank you, you have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to address the Board today. I'm here regarding the Board's decision, or that they want to make a motion to dismiss an order that was directed by the courts on June 26 to release information regarding the redacted information regarding the special education situation that we had. This agenda supports Goal Four, to establish a system that is effective, efficient, and transparent, and accountable. As a special needs mom of a nonverbal child, I feel it's very important to have a transparent Board and school system so that we know what's going on. You know, it's different for parents that have children that can come home and tell them what happened at school today and fill them in. I cannot. So, by you not wanting this information released, it gives me a lot of doubt about the Board, about what you might be hiding, and makes me very concerned about my child's education and what's going on at the school, that I can't be there to find out. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Barick.
Thank you.
Amelia Cole.
Is it Ms. Cole?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Amelia Cole, I am a taxpayer and registered voter in Washoe County, Nevada. I'm also the grandparent of a child with disabilities in the Washoe County School District. As such, I'm quite distressed that the school board spent almost $50,000 to investigate alleged misconduct by officials, school officials, who were overseeing the special ed department. And now, after all that money, you won't release the information to the parents. So what are you afraid of? Were the results so condemning that you are afraid of lawsuits? I mean, if you think dragging this out costly to the Supreme Court, it's not gonna accomplish anything but waste time, so if you think that's gonna stop the parents from, it's not gonna go away, it's only gonna give us time to gather more support. You know very well that the Supreme Court will either refuse to hear this lawsuit, or in the end, they will uphold the decision of the lower court. There's a couple questions that I have about the results, and I really wanna know the answers. Who was allegedly being bullied? Was it the parents of the special ed kids? Was it the teachers? Or was it the kids themselves? We need to know. And another question I have is, when you release student information to the investigators, did you get permission from the parents to do that? Because if you didn't, you're in violation of federal privacy laws that protect children with disabilities. Is that what you're afraid of? Somebody's gonna sue you because you didn't do the right thing? The longer you drag this out, the more publicity it's gonna get, the more it will appear to be a cover-up, and tarnish the reputation of the Washoe County School Board. I'm asking you to do the right thing now, stop wasting taxpayer money, and release that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Mary Beth Collins.
Welcome, Ms. Collins. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. I am also here to speak on Consent Item 2.10, and I am also here today to ask you to release the records that a judge has already ordered the school district to release in redacted form. I'm gonna start by reading off your own agenda. A judge has ordered you to provide the requested records to the newspaper under public records laws. Your own strategic plan on Goal Four says that you will establish a system that is effective, efficient, transparent, and accountable. By not complying with a judge ordering you to comply with open records laws, I don't see how that is transparent or accountable, and it's somewhat laughable that that's the strategic plan goal that would be supporting this consent item. You have an alternative. You can choose not to appeal and to provide the redacted copies of the requested records per the court order. I will tell you, as a parent of a special needs child and as a business leader in this community, I know that the tone at the top is critical for the success of every organization, most particularly this school district. We don't know what happened as parents. You all know, you had access to this report, but we don't. So our imaginations have been left to run wild. If the leadership of the special needs programs in this district created a poisonous environment, I guarantee you, that trickled down to the schools and impacted all of the amazing professionals that work with my son every day. And you have amazing professionals, but they're only as good as the leadership you give them. And the way that leadership sets the tone, sets the way that they're gonna help or help less my child. And that's important. I know that there's this sense, from what I understand, that this is a personnel issue, but when you're talking about your top administrators, personnel issues impact everyone involved in the system, all the way down to my child. I have a legal right to know what happened, because this is a public agency, using my taxpayer money to write that report. I mean, you know better than I do what else $50,000 could have been used for. Could have been someone's one-on-one aid, could have been the resources a child needed to learn, but something happened that was so important that we needed to use it on this report. I have a right to know what that thing was. Please be transparent. Please be accountable and release the records. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Trina Olson.
Ms. Olson, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Trina Olson, and I'm a 23-year employee of the Washoe County School District, serving most recently as an assistant principal at HUG High School. I'm here to respectfully request that you do not appeal the release of records tied to an investigation into workplace bullying, harassment, and retaliation. A memo regarding the situation stated, "The district is taking appropriate action to cause improvements in order to help ensure that all district employees are in a safe and respectful working environment." Yet in the past several months, there is a common theme in public comments about failed and biased investigations and procedural errors. The district has a broken complaint system that allows leaders to displace blame and destroy careers of honest employees who dare to speak up. District leaders have demonstrated a failure to do unbiased investigations, at times failing to investigate complaints at all, as proven by the decision to spend nearly $50,000 to hire an outside investigator for this case. The community sees this expense as wasted funds because the district cannot trust its own investigatory process with fairness. Student records were used in this investigation. Clearly, leadership problems are affecting kids. The lack of accountability and transparency in the district has led to an abuse of power that thinks first to protect leaders, not our children. If you truly want to make a change in the district, I implore you to look at this decision with an understanding of its bigger impact. Appealing the judge's decision only delays the inevitable and tells the community you will keep supporting the Washoe County School District's secrecy that affects public and employee trust. I understand releasing these documents could be painful for the district. It's possible their mistakes will be exposed. Make them face them. Be an example of accountability. Today's vote is a first step on the path toward district healing and culture change. Then I ask respectfully that you use this situation as a reason to look at policy and make meaningful change in the complaint and investigation process that got us here in the first place. We can no longer be apathetic about our leadership. I'm putting that weight on you. This possible defiance of a court order is just another example that the district will continue to hide and protect leadership at all costs. If you don't hold them accountable after being told by a judge, who will? Your decision to release the records right now tells the community that the lack of transparency stops with the Board. This is in your hands, it matters, and the community is watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Toni Richard.
Ms. Richard, welcome. You have three minutes.
Am I supposed to hit a green button?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so for the record, my name is Toni Richard. I have two children that are special needs, and both children have been hurt in the school district. So, one is nonverbal, one is extremely verbal. So the verbal child is able to tell me what happened at school, the nonverbal child could not tell me what happened at school. It took me a big investigation to find out why he had finger bruises and marks on him. This is a medically fragile child, and he could not tell me. And it took an aide going behind the scenes to tell me that he had been hurt, and for me to question the bruising and the markings to get an investigation going. Parents should not have to go through that. I have had to hide a recorder in my son's backpack to find out what was going on in the classroom. This is why, as a special needs mom of a nonverbal child, we want classrooms to have cameras in it, which is gonna be a bigger cost to you if we have to go that route. So we're just wanting to work with you, we want to be able to trust you. We need to know that our children are safe. And if you are honest and transparent with this report, that takes a lot for us building a unity group, to work together and to trust one another, but when it's being hidden and behind the scenes and pushed aside and nothing happened to your child, we don't know why he got fingerprints all over him, then it's not gonna build a trusting bond, and this is gonna be a whole lot deeper than putting special needs cameras and recording devices in each of the classrooms. So I'm asking you to honor the judge's decision and to release the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to us on anything on the consent agenda before we move on? Okay, thank you. We do have, on, let's see, Item 2.05, there was an amendment to the minutes, do we need to mention that in our discussion? No? Okay. We just changed or added some language regarding the balance calendar, that we would look at it again in three years, we added that to the minutes.
It was posted earlier this week.
Great, thank you. And counsel, do you wanna say anything about Item 2.10?
Well, I really can't, because our conversations are returning client privilege. If you want to, you're welcome to waive the privilege. I still support an appeal on this decision, because it is a public policy related to workplace harassment. I am comfortable in saying it didn't involve children, but beyond that, I'm bound by privilege.
Okay. Well, I would like to clarify that I certainly can speak for the Board, that we absolutely want to have a relationship of trust with all of our parents and all of our families. There are instances, particularly where there are allegations and complaints, in which even victims' rights need to be protected, or alleged victims' rights need to be protected. And were this case to go forward without appeal and without a resolution, the entire state of public employers do not have clarification about how we can protect even the rights of victims in these cases. If we had to reveal all of the information that is in the record, it would have a very chilling effect on people coming forward to make complaints, as was good as a concern today, that you need to be able to come forward to make complaints. So I just wanted to clarify, as counsel said, this incident had nothing to do with any allegations that affected children, and it really is a public policy clarification that public employers are seeking in the state to understand how the law will be applied. So, I don't know if anyone wants to add anything else on any consent agenda items? Okay, and we did have some questions on the consent agenda, and thank you staff for answering those, and I assume those will be made part of the record. With that, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.25?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Vice President Raymond.
Second.
Trustee Kelly.
Second.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Mayor? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of a consent agenda. Is there anything further? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will go on then to items under number three, which are presentations, and Item 3.01 is Presentation and Overview of the School District's Local Plan Pertaining to Special Education Funding Required Under Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. Dr. Green and Mr. Mathers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Superintendent Davis, President Holland, members of the Board, I'm Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer, and I'm here with my colleague Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer. Superintendent Davis asked us to come forward, I believe based upon a request by the Board of Trustees, to do a presentation over our IDEA funds. And what we were hoping to do today was actually do just a really 60,000-foot presentation, not only on IDEA, but really the general funding of special education in our district, as well as how we spend those monies. At the next board meeting, Student Services will be submitting for the consent agenda approval of our IDEA grant. So that's why we wanted to come to this meeting today, so that way you can answer any questions you have before the next meeting. So what we plan on talking about is a brief history of IDEA, of what it is and what it does and does not do, our local plan, which is our IDEA grant, special education funding in the Washoe County School District, specifically IDEA Medicaid and our state funding that we receive.
And just for those folks who can't read the PowerPoint, IDEA stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Thank you, President. I promised myself this morning I was gonna really work on my-
Your acronyms.
Yeah, and I'm doing great so far.
You're in recovery.
Okay. So, really, just the brief history, and a lot of this you can either find online, or I'm happy to provide more information. But special education in the United States really wasn't addressed federally until 1975. But special education in the United States really wasn't addressed federally until 1975. Until that time, each state or school district determined how students with disabilities would receive services, and there really wasn't any guidance through the Office of Special Education federally for that. So, the first bill that was passed went from 1975 to 1990, and that was the Education for All Handicapped Children. And then, IDEA was reauthorized or was created at that time, which was Public Law 94142 for all those teachers out there and know that law very well. So, each of the plans, if you really look at IDEA, it's two things. It's the IDEA grant is a grant from the federal government that is passed through the states, and there are four sections in it. Section A is really the responsibility of the federal government and what we call the Office for Special Education Programs, or OSEP. So, you hear a lot of OSEP letters that come out that guide recommendations. The federal government listed some of the criteria for that, which I'll describe in Part B. Part B is what our school districts have to follow, and that is the education of students with disabilities ages three through the end of 21 years. And the Washoe County School District, if a student turns 21 during the school year, they continue their education until the end of that year. Part B has six principles that it was based upon. There's lots of things that are part of IDEA, but there are six principles. The first one is every child is entitled to a free and appropriate public education, which we know as FAP. The second is when a school professional believes that a student may, or anybody believes that a student may have a disability, that that student is entitled to a complete comprehensive evaluation. Number three, the creation of an individualized educational plan, or IEP. Number four, that the education of services for students with disabilities be provided in the least restrictive environment, and you hear that acronym quite a bit, which is called the LRE. Number five, input from the child and the parents to create that IEP or that educational process be considered. And lastly, six is when a parent feels that the IEP is inappropriate, that they have rights under IDEA to challenge. So, as a district, to receive these grant monies, we have to ensure these at least six principles and ensure that we're providing the requirements met out in IDEA. Section C of IDEA focuses on the need for identifying very young children. Typically, this is students' birth to age three, and what you see is you see individualized family service plans, or IFSPs, which are kind of like an IEP, but for students before three, typically what they receive in their home, and a lot of our public agencies support that. And then, Part D is listing what national activities are provided within that. What's really interesting, I think cogent to the conversation, is Part B, when it was adopted by the federal Congress, they believed or stated during that time that IDEA should be funded about 40% of the cost to educate a child with a disability. At that time, they anticipated it costs double to educate on average a child with a disability, so they felt that the federal government should pay up to 40%, and the state should then be responsible for picking up the remaining cost of that. Since then, the federal government has funded the IDEA grant at about 15% or less since they passed this. So, even though it's supposed to go to 40%, it's being funded around 15% here in Nevada, and we're still, as a district and state, responsible for meeting all requirements of those that grant. So, next board meeting, we will be submitting the grant for the next local plan, or IDEA grant, that our district receives. You'll see at the beginning of the grant application, it will have several pages of assurances. And what those assurances are, are really the grant requirements based upon those six principles that I just outlined, that the district is posting and saying that we are going to meet those assurances based upon the grant requirements. And then, you'll see the specific budget expenditure sheet. And I know Mark will talk just briefly about the general monies we receive, but the IDEA monies are not restrictive. They don't say that you have to use them for staff or professional learning, as long as we use them to directly support the education and FAP of our students with disabilities, the district can use those funds in any of those ways. We've included the list of ways that we use currently our funds to support our students with disabilities.
So, I'll just jump in here. Mark Mathers, CFO. Really, this is kind of the first piece or chunk of special education funding. There are three funds that we use to pay for special education services. This is the first of them. As Byron noted, it's a small fraction of the overall cost of special education, but we'll walk through each fund and each funding source for you.
Part of B, there is a smaller section that we use for early childhood funds, and that amount is listed there, and we really use those funds exclusively for staff because it's such a small amount. I will do want to go back and share one thing. The last bullet in regards for our district uses for funds, it lists early intervention. And what early intervention is, is that provides funding for students who do not have a disability. So, the idea behind it is we actually use some of these funds to provide interventions and support for elementary and middle school students to see if they can receive support so they do not have to be identified with a disability or within an IEP. Medicaid, I'll turn to Mark on this one.
So, we do provide a number of Medicaid-eligible services for special education students. We bill the state for those services. We've estimated that we'll receive roughly $2.4 million in reimbursements from the state. Could turn out to be a little bit higher. We've brought on a new vendor to help us with those billings, and they've, I think, really kind of improved our processes in doing that. So, we hope to see this number rise over the next several years, but for fiscal year 18, we're estimating $2.4 million from this source. So, this is the second fund that supplies funding for special education. We had the IDEA fund at roughly $10 million, and then there's the Medicaid fund at $2.4 And then, the third fund comes, our special education fund derives its funding from the state, from the distributive school account. So, out of the DSA, we get a general basic per pupil guarantee, as you all know, for general education students, and then there's a separate guarantee for special education. And so, this is a complicated formula here on this chart. Like a lot of the states, funding to the school district, they begin with the prior year's funded amount, and then they adjust upward. You'll notice that there's a 13% cap referenced. And so, based on prior studies at the state, they set a cap for how special education students would receive that per pupil amount. It is capped at 13%. We have more than 13% of the total population as special ed, but we only receive the full amount of per pupil funding, which is roughly $3,300 per student, for students up to that 13% cap. Then, any students over that cap are funded at a lower amount, roughly half of that $3,300. So, that's how we receive our funding. It totals $29.15 million for fiscal year 18.
Mark, just one second. Trusty Mayor?
Yes. You know, this cap is really, it's really in the way of funding education as it should be funding. Is there any plan in the works to form legislation and go to legislature and ask that this cap be raised above the 13% level?
Do you want me to answer that?
Whatever you want, Superintendent. I'm happy to answer.
So, at this last session, remember, Washoe introduced a bill to, originally, it was to eliminate the cap, and the discussion around the cap for kids, which if you watch this, we talked about the only cap we should have on our kids is a graduation cap and not cap kids who come and say it 13%. That's all we're going to serve. As a result, they did increase funding at a 1.5 ratio, so there's work being done around that. And so, we were successful in our bill. Remember, it was modified a little bit, but we did receive more money, and so the 13% cap as it stands originally doesn't quite look that way anymore.
That's just a one-shot deal, though. It's not being carried over to infinity.
No, no, it's not. No. The new law is not 13% cap. It's a weighted, and it works out, so you get more money if you're over the cap. And it's not, it was not a one-time deal. It's now they could change the law in the session, but as we move forward, that 13% cap went away. It's still not like a full-blown, we don't get enough money to service kids nationally, like we're talking about nationally, but the state has done a better job of releasing that 13% cap and giving funds out if your district goes over the cap. Part of that has to do with the percentages around numbers. If you live in a rural and you get one more kid, it could skew your cap because you have a smaller number, the percentage versus the numbers. And so, when we look at all kids, how do we service kids? Because what we don't want to happen in schools, and the state and the legislature agree, is for kids not to receive service or teachers or schools not identify kids because they weren't receiving funding.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes. Thanks, Madam President.
Superintendent, let me ask. You mentioned that in addition to the 13%, we did receive a 1.5% increase, or did I get that wrong?
No, I forget the number of the formula, but it's not a 13% cap. Dr. Green, you know the actual number?
I believe we get the monies up to 13%. Anything above 13%, we get 50% of that way.
Whereas, before our bill, you got $0. So, it's more.
Okay. Okay. And it's a one-time only, like you said.
No. I'm interested. So, as it stands, previously 13% cap, after that, you receive no money. After our bill came about, it is the 13%, and then after that, you get 50% additional moving forward, unless they write a bill to change that. So, now, we will get additional funding, which is not full funding, but is at least half funding, which we never received before.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, go ahead. Good questions.
Yep. So, the difference in the, between the, sorry, thank you, Byron. The difference between the cost to educate these children and those three funding sources in fiscal year 18 equated to $43.6 million, and so that cost is covered by the general fund. So, you know, for each of, you know, the last 20 years, the general fund has transferred monies to the special education fund. And you can see the kind of costs that it covers. Again, this isn't restrictive. We just wanted to give you a sense of the kind of costs that are covered by this transfer. And so, in total, this gives you a feel for total costs. Again, IDEA covers $10 million, Medicaid $2.4, DSA $29.15 million, and then the general fund, a little over $43 million. So, it's a significant contribution by the general fund, a little bit more than half of the total funding of special education comes from the district's general fund.
Mark, and our general fund for the entire district's operations is how much?
$470 million.
So, this is almost 10%. The transfer to special education is almost 10% of our entire budget for education for 64,000 students, so it's a fairly significant investment and necessary and appropriate. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, or maybe it was Byron, you had mentioned that right now it's $2.4 million that we're going to be getting for Medicaid reimbursement, but you said that the numbers should rise. And I was just wondering if you could explain, like, how it's going to rise and why you think it's going to do that.
You want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We actually started three years ago, seeing an increase in Medicaid services just by doing a better job. We now have a new vendor, which we think will better capture the Medicaid services. This year, we know when you have a large implementation, we know it takes time to get that footing and for teachers to be able to do that. I can give you a couple of specific examples. We're going to start now, and then also, we're working with the state. So, for example, when you provide related services for students with disabilities, most of those related services are Medicaid reimbursable. The largest one we have is our speech language pathology that provides speech services for students. That's our largest Medicaid reimbursement that we receive. For us to be able to make sure that we document the services provided for the student, to make sure we're compliant within the IEP, but also capture that amount, and the rules for Medicaid are pretty complicated. For example, they will allow a speech pathologist to work with, I believe it is, I want to see, up to five to seven students at a time. If they work with more than five to seven students, you get no Medicaid reimbursement. If you work with five, you get all of it. So, obviously, we want to look at our staffing and our student needs, but obviously get the greatest capture of services for our speech. The new system that we have actually connects those services that the speech path and other related services provide, and not only puts it, the documentation to the IEP, but also connects it to our Medicaid reimbursement. So, as a district staff, we'll be able to, at any time, even during a week, I can run a report and say who didn't receive their services this week, because maybe the student was absent. How do we make that up? And how are we making sure that we're collecting all of that Medicaid reimbursement? That's one example. Another one, which we know is a greater lift, is we have been meeting with the state to discuss our state Medicaid plan.
I need to interrupt. I'm sorry, there's a car blocking the handicap ramp, so Bob, Holmes, whoever you are, your car is blocking, so wheelchair can't get into the car because you're not parked correctly.
Chief, can you go take a look at that? Thank you.
Another example is we've started to work with the state. The federal government identifies the Medicaid reimbursement, the rules that are allowable. Each state then creates their own Medicaid plan as a state entity, not just for education, but all the parts or components of the Medicaid. Our state has a plan for an education for Medicaid reimbursements that's very specific that is not taking into account all the Medicaid reimbursements that we could gather. For example, if a student is receiving speech services for related services and maybe physical therapy, the district, on the two days that that student receives those related services, could claim the transportation of that student as reimbursable under the federal rules, but our state plan, we did not write that into that. The rules are very excited about that because that obviously would be a great finance for the rules, but we have to work with all the entities, all the school districts, the State Department, to see if we, as a state, want to redo that plan, and we think that will provide a greater revenue access just for the services we're already providing our students. You're welcome.
And Dr. Green, I know Medicaid is certainly one of those things at the national level that is hotly debated, but we don't see any threats on the immediate horizon. Oh, were you, I'm sorry. Would you like to say something, Vice President Raymond?
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure, I'm sorry.
The additional $500,000 that we're receiving because of the half we get after the 13% cap, what is that offsetting? Was that last year funding that was coming out of our general fund, that we were able to save some there, or, I know it's not a huge amount, but when you consider the entire budget of the organization?
Yeah, Mark Mathers. So, it certainly helps. However, we've seen special education costs rise greater than the rest of the budget. So, it's helping to, in some sense, reduce the amount of the general fund transfer. So, it's helpful, yeah. It's not insignificant, so it's helpful, yeah.
And so, with the DSA amount, then, it's looking at the chart, they're taking the prior year amount, so they're not considering the amount of our IDEA funding and giving us less based on the amount we get in other categories? I'm not sure if I'm explaining this correctly, that we're, they're not supplanting from other categories for us, they're supplementing what, I mean, we're supplementing what they're giving us, but...
Yes, it's additive to IDEA. They're not supplanting, but, so like I say, they come from a baseline, prior year amount. They do adjust for inflation, so that's helpful. It's roughly $500,000. Then, they account for some enrollment growth, but then the cap kicks in.
So, basically, we don't get penalized...
No, we don't.
...through our DSA for getting more funding in other areas to support.
No, they don't subtract for what we get in IDEA.
Okay, that was a better way to say that thing. Sorry.
No, that's good. And did you want to comment anything on Medicaid at the national level, Dr. Green or Mark?
President Holland, I defer to my colleague, Mark Mathers.
Mr. Mathers?
We just remain hopeful. So far, we haven't seen any significant changes, but one never knows.
So, let me pipe in about this. So, part of advocacy for AASA, which is the National Superintendent's Organization, is we take the heel for three days, and we lobby with an initiative, and thankfully, Medicaid was not on the top priority, a lot around workforce development, CT, and things like that, and Medicaid seems to be stable. Feems.
Well, it's certainly an important component for our special education families, so, okay, thank you. Please, go on.
I believe that concludes our presentation, so if there's any other questions from the trustees?
Yes, Dr. Feemster?
Thanks, Madam President. Dr. Green, are we counting real heavily on the teachers' understanding of how the information... is put into the overall plan? And are they receiving, like, excellent training?
Yes, Trustee Feimster. Superintendent Davis has asked me to come back to the trustees on the August 28 board meeting to give a special education update, and I could definitely get into a lot of the specifics in that time. But yes, we've done probably the most comprehensive professional learning the last three years and continue to do so about finding appropriate measurable goals and objectives that are rigorous, the responsibility of administrators in leading the IEPs, how do we ensure that we're implementing that IEP that is a high-quality IEP, the data collection, behavior, and whatnot support. So I think, and we actually look at the system of support and reform over the last three years, it really all connects together. It's kind of just one larger system. So if we're actually meeting the compliant laws, the compliance laws that the WestEd report outlined of the concerns, if we are providing adequate professional learning, if we're being proactive in the support, then we believe that students' outcomes will increase, and we're actually seeing those results. So, yes.
Okay. Which would... I guess I'm looking at attendance, because you mentioned attendance earlier, that if students did or did not receive X amount of speech therapy, it could impact the Medicaid funding, am I correct?
Well, yes, but what that allows us to be able to do is, if a student is, let's say, absent on Wednesday because they're ill or they go to the doctor, we know they were supposed to receive speech services that day. We then can identify that quickly through that automated system. The speech teachers do keep track of that themselves, but we, a principal will be able to easily see, central office will be able to see, and we'll be able to assure that that student gets that made up the next week or so.
Okay, and it does include our outlined areas?
Yes, it includes all students with disabilities in our district. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Yes, Trustee Mayor?
Yes. Is this added on to their work alone?
The best part about this is no, it does not. So what our related services have to do is they have to document the services they're providing to our students within that IEP. So that way, if family members or we, as a district, know that they're receiving those services. Now, they may take their own individual notes just to reference the treatment that the student's receiving, but by them logging this, instead of them writing it in a notebook, and then we have to scan it, and then we have to keep track of it, if they just log it into our Excelify system, they're done, it's one and done, and then we capture it as a larger system, which was one of our concerns from three years ago. We did not have a lot of systems in place in special education, and now we have some great systems that eventually, we believe, is going to not increase, but hopefully minimize some of the work of teachers, but also ensure that we're being compliant and implementing IEPs.
So they log it in on their laptop?
Yes, their computer, or their...
So they go from school to school, yeah.
Yes, like our nurses that travel on the buses, we bought them iPads so they could just log it right there.
Okay.
With the speech pass, so it's... Hopefully, the technology is working for us.
And you're coming back at our next meeting?
On August 28.
August 28.
For special education.
Could you please include, and I'd like to know before school starts, if special education teachers are in the category of critical needs where retirees can apply to teach special ed that are retired? Because last year, we had quite a few critical needs special ed teachers, and I'm wondering how we're looking for this school year.
I will definitely follow up with Emily, our chief of HR, regarding that. I know in the past, we've had certain categories of those positions that have been critical needs, but I'll confirm.
Well, I'm sure, like, speech therapists, you don't go out in the parking lot, and there they are, you know? So I would like to know if... And I'd like to know ahead of school, because if you have real needs, that some of the retirees that have just retired or what have you, maybe they'd be interested in filling a spot for critical needs. What do you think?
I think it's a great idea. I know that HR just announced this last week, the number of positions that were vacant versus filled, and I know that it was getting down quite a bit, but I do know that we have hired teachers that are that critical. I think it's formerly AV555 for those positions.
So we'll stick to role and goal, that's a function of HR, and so we will have Emily get the information. That's simple information. We've been working on that for looking at what vacancies we have, what areas. So just to be clear, not Dr. Green's necessary role, except for he tells HR what he needs. So we will get that information to you.
Well, I think it's important to start out school with the person that's going to be there all year. A lot of times, I hear that a substitute comes in for two weeks, and then the next two weeks, another one, and so forth. So if you've got critical needs, I wish you to post it on the webpage and try to get some people to come and fill those positions.
Trustee Mayor, we're... I'm getting kicked under the table that we're straying off these special education budgets.
Oh, I thought this was a presentation on special ed.
It is on special ed, and we'll talk more about staffing.
Well, okay, I'm cut off again. I understand.
I'm just... I'm getting... I'm getting kicked under the table. But it's a very important subject.
And so we've already started compiling that data, so your request is simple. We've been working on that every year. When we start school back, we tell you how many vacancies we have. We are ahead of where we were last year, but we will have a formal report to let you know what vacancies in special ed, math, science, like, all the critical needs areas and what we're doing. So that's an easy ask.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the presentation? Yep. Trustee Taylor, no?
No, I had one, but we're having that presentation in August, I remember, so it's really more... That my question will probably be answered then, so I'm good. Thank you.
Correct. And one of the questions we had ahead of the meeting for the... on the agenda was just, are the WestEd recommendations being fully budgeted for in the funding model that you all presented to us? And I understand that'll be covered at the special education agenda item. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mathers, you're up again. And Kendra Folet, our bond counsel, is also going to join Mr. Mathers for our public hearing regarding the issuance of up to $300 million in general obligation bonds. And as soon as you've collected yourself, I want to formally open the public hearing and ask for a public comment, but do you have a presentation you'd like to make to us?
Just a real quick one, Madam President. Mark Mathers, CFO, and with me is Kendra Folet from Sherman &amp; Howard, our bond counsel. Last month, you approved a resolution of intent to issue up to $300 million in bonds, and that then generates, per state law, a notification process where we went in the newspaper for three straight weeks to talk about or to notify taxpayers, residents of this public hearing. And then there was also a fourth notification we made in the paper. So this is required by state law to have this public hearing. There's no action required via this public hearing. It is simply to take public comment and then close the public hearing.
Are there any public comments on our proposed issuance of $300 million from our sales tax funds for construction of three new schools and repairs and maintenance of our existing facilities? And these... All of these projects have been approved by the Capital Project...
Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Protection Committee, thank you.
Madam President, not quite.
Oh, okay.
So this precedes the actual formal approval by the Capital Facilities Protection Committee of those facilities. We won't issue bonds until that's occurred, but this, because of the timeline required to issue debt, needs to take place before that.
Got it, thank you. That was... I misspoke on that. What the Capital Funding Protection Committee has reviewed is our plan for capital improvements, and they have approved that plan for capital improvements, which includes these projects, but the specific projects themselves will come back. Okay, great. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this item in our public hearing? All right, then, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And as you said, we don't have to take any action as a result of this, it's just hold the public hearing. Kendra, thank you for coming down. Is there anything you'd like to share? Update us on the family? How are the kids doing?
It was the summer.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mathers, as well. Okay, and we are now... Should we take a quick break before we get to this next item? Take about 10 minutes? 10 minutes? Okay, we'll be in recess until 3:15. Is everybody ready? We'll be back in session. Okay, we'll reconvene now, and we are on item 3.03. Mark Mathers, our chief financial officer, is going to... You have a presentation for us on the approval of the final language for the priorities, goals, results, methods, processes, definitions, to be used as part of the priority-based budgeting system for the 2018-19 fiscal year, to include references to prioritizing resources to support academic growth, career and college readiness, a safe and supportive environment, and a well-rounded student experience. Mr. Mathers?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So last month, we did talk about priority-based budgeting in greater depth, and you heard from me and Resource X, our consultant, on that. We presented to you the five external results or goals that are at the top row of this slide. Academic growth, community, family partnerships, safe and supportive environment, well-rounded student experience, and career and college readiness. As we talked about, this tracks closely to the strategic plan, which is intentional, but we did add two new results here, since two of the strategic plan goals are actually internal services. So for external services, the three goals that match the strategic plan are academic growth, community and family partnerships, and safe and supportive environment, and then we added the last two. And then we went through the definitions, which I know this is kind of wonkish and, you know, is it terminology Resource X uses here? Really, these are just descriptions for how the school district intends to achieve each of those goals. It is not meant to be all-inclusive. There can be things that we are doing to promote academic growth that are not listed. And so how this comes into play and how this is used is for departments to first score the various programs that are identified, and again, we have more than 600 programs identified. But this is kind of a signpost or descriptors that they can look at and use in scoring programs. And then there's a second round of scoring by a peer group that does not include any of the department personnel, so no department personnel in that peer group will score their own department's programs. And so again, this is meant to be just kind of helpful descriptors. We did hear from the board that they... You wanted several changes, so you can see... I know it's very hard to read, but in the...
Yeah, this is a... This is definitely an eye chart, and we are passing out 3D glasses out in the lobby.
And I've got my reading glasses, too. So the first... The first, in the top-left box, that first description had very redundant language to the one below.
Can you enlarge that, JJ? Uh-oh, that was a good face.
I just asked, yeah.
Probably not.
I don't think I can.
Okay. Okay.
So the language in red was essentially duplicated down below, and so that was one comment that was made. Under safe and supportive environment, I think it was the president who remarked about a possible change to the wording there. Instead of identifying students who may be at risk, there was a wording change, and the next slide will show you the change. Trustee Kelly had a number of changes under career and college readiness to add in military careers as in the descriptions. And then also, I believe it was Trustee Kelly who wanted to add financial literacy, but I may be mistaken. So on the next slide, JJ, if you could read this, you would... You can see that there are those changes that have been made. So we struck out on the top left-hand box that very redundant language that really appears right below it. And part of the confusion, I think, last time was we had to kind of truncate the descriptions to make them readable, but you can see in that box, we talk about, you know, some of the ways that we will provide equitable instruction practices. And again, so that includes, for instance, SEL and multi-tiered system of supports. Again, this is to help scorers understand how academic growth may be achieved, but again, it's not all-inclusive. And so then, under safe and supportive environment, we did change the wording to say identifiers risk that students face, which I thought was a really good change. We added financial literacy at the very bottom definition under well-rounded student experience. And then under career and college readiness, we added military in a couple boxes. We might, you know, we possibly could add it in a couple more, but we kind of stopped there, you know, understanding that a military career is a career as well. So what we're looking for is either further feedback or comments or changes, or alternatively, just approval of these results and definitions that, again, will be used in the scoring process.
Thank you, Mark. Dr. Taylor, you have a question?
I do, thank you, Madam President. I'm looking under well-rounded student experience, box number four, fourth box down, traits and supports culturally unbiased, high-quality and relevant student programming so that graduates prepare to compete in a global society. Absolutely, fully support that. I was wondering if we can't say that in a way... In a way that, instead of saying culturally unbiased, whether if we said something along the lines of more culturally diverse or diverse as a whole, so that you don't get caught up in some of the varying definitions that culture could imply?
Culturally responsive.
Exactly, so something a little...
They put in positive.
Instead of culturally unbiased, something that's more of a positive, active...
That's a great suggestion.
Kind of a framework, and it's the same meaning in a way, but I think it clarifies some things.
So it recreates and supports diverse, high-quality, and relevant student programming?
Well, I think you want to leave in culturally.
I would... I think if we said culturally diverse, that should be...
Okay.
And that, you know, if we said something like inclusive, culturally inclusive, I mean, there are several different ways to go with that.
I like the word inclusive.
I was going to say that. That might be... That might be a better way of doing that, and inclusive leaves it open. So maybe culturally inclusive?
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was my one suggestion.
Okay.
Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mathers.
Other comments? Comments and suggestions? I did have a couple of comments, Mark. I was just curious. First of all, I am interested in, does everything count equally? Or is there some sort of weighting in this? Does...
So maybe if you could go to the next slide. I guess the answer... The short answer is they are... They are equal in a way in that... Sorry, if you could go back, JJ. I'm sorry, I'm going to drive you nuts. Or maybe I can control it here, right? Sorry.
She lives for that. She lives to serve. She does.
You could have a program that lines up with, say, three of the boxes underneath community, family partnerships, and you could have a program that only lines up against one of those boxes underneath community, family partnerships. So again, let me back up a little bit. Each program is scored, if it's an external program, against each of the five goals. So they're going to get a score of zero to four on all five. But within community, family partnerships, as a sample, you might have a program that kind of touches on three of those boxes and one that touches on one. That in and of itself doesn't mean the one that touches or aligns with three of the boxes gets scored higher than one that just does, clicks on one. And so if we go to the scoring criteria, you know, ultimately, what departments and the peer groups are going to be asked is, keeping with that example, say, for community, family partnerships, how essential is it to the result? And so we have these scoring rubric that you see before you. So ultimately, those definitions, those descriptions are simply that. They're just descriptions to help people think about, how does this program achieve that goal? And so, you know, ultimately, they are scoring themselves against, again, whether they're four essential to the results of that program. Went away, there would be an absolute discernible, visible reduction in meeting that goal. If it's a three, there's a very strong influence, so we have language in here, there'd be a short-term impact, there might be spin-off negative effects, so we eliminated this program, and so maybe now another program has to be increased to achieve the same level of result versus a two. Versus a two, where there's either an indirect kind of influence on that goal or a direct, very small, kind of negligible result. And then one is just a very minor tangential impact on the result. So again, the definitions don't mean, like I say, one's not more important than another. And if you click on three versus one, that doesn't mean anything in and of itself.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry, that was long.
No, no. And I was asking a little bit different question. That's okay, which, because I probably didn't explain it very well. We are not proposing that, for example, academic growth has one, two, three, four, five things that are, would be in evidence of something that supports academic growth. You know, like you said, maybe that program hits three of those five. We're not saying that the, all of those five things in academic growth are more or less important than community and family partnerships.
I'm sorry, now again, no. No. When we started this, again, we had, in our strategic plan, we, I mean, just to give you a little color to kind of the thought process, there were only three external goals. And we surveyed the leadership team and others to say, how important is academic growth versus community and family partnerships versus safe and supportive environment? So that was something we asked. And there was a large vote towards academic growth by far being the more important program. And so part of the thought process is when we started thinking about academic growth, we thought, but there's other things we do when we're teaching children that are important, like being a well-rounded student, you know, and having exposure to the arts and music, for instance. Now, there is, I think, an impact on academic growth for those who take music. But we also wanted to break out and say, you know, we're not just about test scores here. And we want to engage students in these other areas. Same with career and college readiness. There's certainly an overlap and a linkage between academic growth, well-rounded student experience, and career and college readiness. They're all kind of getting to the same point. So the reality is, to answer your question more directly, each of these five areas are weighted the same. However, you can see, because we kind of broke out academic growth into three results now, that that essentially is weighted more than community and family partnerships and safe and supportive environment.
Got you. Okay. And I think the question is relevant because as we are honing in on the superintendent's evaluation process, for example, and aligning things with the strategic plan, we want to have that alignment go across, sorry, all of our structures and systems. So if there are going to be different weights, then we need to have that conversation. Because if they are more important, then they do deserve more resource allocation.
Absolutely. It's a great point. I mean, I think that's one of the greatest things about what the district is doing, is linking these different processes. And so, yes, you're absolutely right, Madam President. If you came back and had a different weighting, that should be reflected in this process, and we have time to do that.
Okay. But at this point, the way that that was manifested is by actually spreading that academic growth, sort of teasing more out from it.
Yes.
And allowing it to receive, allowing a program to receive credit for multiple ways that academic growth is being supported.
Yeah, essentially, for an external service, 60% of the total score will, you know, three out of the five results kind of relate to academic achievement.
Great. Okay, okay. That's great discussion. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Anybody have anything to add? Okay, how's it going so far on use of this tool?
This is a very intense...
Is that, am I allowed to ask that question? Is that relevant, counsel? He has sharpened his shoes under the table, he said.
Yes, I think it's...
Thank you, counsel. How's it going?
So this is a very intensive, labor-intensive process. And I know some of the departments are wondering, one is right, when do we complete this? But to this point, the participation's been very, very good. Departments have met the deadlines we set. The scoring process has kind of slowed us down. I mean, we want to do it right. So we've kind of slipped the deadline for that. But we're still doing really well. So I think it's going really well. You know, as you heard last month, we, finance has weekly one-hour calls with Resource X. We're making changes and improvements to how this is done for a school district versus how they do it for city and county.
And that's got to make the process more time-consuming.
It does.
Since we are the first ones doing it in the country as a school district.
Yes. So you're absolutely right. So as an example, I mean, we decided to form a steering committee that was academic-oriented to help us. And so we are looking at what are called program attributes. I think you heard a little bit about it last meeting. And there are different program attributes for schools than there are for municipalities. So we've been working through that to identify those. So that has slowed us down a little bit. We set a deadline for department scoring of last Friday. Again, we're still working with departments, so that is slipping. Then they'll score those program attributes, and then the peer group will start. So we're, you know, I don't know, sixth, seventh inning of a ballgame, you know, out of nine innings. We're getting there.
Good.
It's, you know, and it's going well. And I appreciate everyone's participation, because it is a lot of work.
Well...
Yeah, everyone's done a great job on it.
We very much appreciate the intensive work the staff has been doing on this because it is very difficult. And I think it's a good sign that you haven't been run out of town yet.
Right, right.
Trustee Feimster.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Mathers, do you see any areas where that pendulum is just swinging this way on one question and the complete opposite?
Can you give me an example?
Let's see. Is there consistency in the responses from people? That's what I guess. Or do you...
Yeah, it's a little early to say. I mean, it's a great question, because we want this to be a valid and reliable instrument.
Right.
Right? And because a lot of departments are, have come back to us to understand how to score better, which is great. We've heard from other agencies that kind of went through the process and didn't do it correctly, and they had to redo it all. Instead, what we've had is a lot of questions from departments about, okay, do I have this straight? How do you score? So it's a little early for me to tell you, tell you one way or the other. I'm hopeful, because they're coming back to us, asking myself and my staff how to score, that we won't see wild inconsistencies.
Okay.
But that's also the point of having a peer group. They will be able to see the department's scores. And if something doesn't look right, that's a big part of their job, is to highlight that, flag it, to say, I don't understand why this program is either scored too highly in our view or too lowly. And then they'll go back to the department and have that discussion.
I think I heard exactly what I wanted to hear, that they are coming back to you, asking for clarification or some type of input. And I think that's, I hope you're responding.
Yeah, no, it's a great sign.
Okay, that's a great sign. You're right.
We want them to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So now I'll just add, one of the things we talked about as we went on this process is inter reader reliability, right? Like that had to get down to what we're talking about. And so Mark and I have had that discussion. So we're all cognizant of that, so that it's not about me and it's about the organization.
That's great. Any other questions or comments? Well, again, thank you from all of us for all of the work that everyone is doing on this. It's a, it's a very pioneering effort. And it's also a really, I think will be a very rewarding effort for our district. So something you can all be proud of. So we can all be proud of. Okay? All right? So we, is there any public comment on this? Anybody have anything? So I need a motion to approve the language as revised. And trustee Taylor made a great suggestion for culturally inclusive as opposed to unbiased. Is there a motion, trustee Taylor?
Yes, so move. Make it easy, so move. Unless you'd like me to spell it out.
No, I think, JJ, is that sufficient for you? Okay?
Thank you, Madam President.
Second by trustee Dr. Feimster. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Okay. And now for the cast of thousands. Our school district strategic plan discussion and reporting of metrics related to the following objectives. Objective 1.3, strengthen teaching and learning through technology and 21st century instructional strategies. Objective 1.5, provide and continuously improve the pathway to college and career readiness through an aligned pre-K-16 system. Objective 2.2, provide and continuously improve meaningful, high-quality professional learning targeted to concrete learning objectives and desired performance outcomes. Objective 3.2, increase meaningful partnerships between the district and families focused on student success. Objective 3.4, strengthen the assistance of volunteer services to schools and departments with a focus on supporting student success and school performance. And objective 5.1, provide and continuously improve a climate of belongingness and self-worth among students, families, staff, and the community that is centered around an inclusive, collaborative, and engaging learning environment by providing equitable practices, strategies, and materials. And here is Erica Olson, our consultant, to open this conversation. Thank you. Welcome, Erica.
Good afternoon, trustees. Superintendent Davis, we are Erica Olson for the record. We are here today for the second of three strategic performance reports for school year 17-18. And I'm just gonna set the stage for the leadership team, who will be up here to present the actual metrics and performance. Again, we started this in March, again, second of two. And the third will be in October, which will be summative, a full performance report of the entire strategic plan for data specific to school year 17-18. I'll talk about that in just a quick minute. And then when we're done working through the metrics we're reporting today, superintendent Davis will close with some highlights and overall comments of performance and what we're looking at. Same as we looked at last time, the report is consistent, so getting familiarity of how we read the data and how we report on the data. Today, we're reporting on about a third of the metrics in the plan, about 15 in total, picking out a handful from each of the goals, as well as where we have closed information for the school year. So that's how we picked the various data points. We're asking each metric owner to report out in about two minutes or less to keep us moving. And just to point this out, because it can be a little bit hard to remember and also hard to be clear about what we're looking at. So we're reporting out on school year 17-18, where we have 16-17 actuals. You'll have that as a comparative. In many cases, these metrics are new, so we're establishing baselines, and we don't have comparatives. In some cases, we don't have a full closed year of 17-18 data. So you'll, we're noting really clearly what the reporting period is that you're looking at for the data and whether it's complete or not. So just as a heads up on that. And then you'll notice the slides are colored. They're colored based on whether we're a header behind our target. We don't have a target for some of the metrics, because we don't have baselines. So non-targeted metrics are blue. So that's, again, just an orientation. So the PowerPoint deck is the detail. And in the board packet is the scorecard, which summarizes March's data, today's data, and then we'll add October's data. So that will be the complete report. So without taking any more time, I will pass it over to our first metric owner, which is Robert Sidford.
Sidford.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Thank you.
It was a great opening, and this is really well organized. And we appreciate all the work that's gone into putting this together. Welcome, Robert.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Appreciate the time to talk to you, President Holland, members of the board, superintendent Davis. I am Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. I always have a hard time getting that one out. Still getting used to that. I'm here to report on two metrics related to goal one, academic growth. So objective 1.3, strengthen teaching and learning through technology and 21st century instructional strategies. Looks like I need to click there. Okay, so you can see that this baseline is for school year 17-18. We have, I have two metrics to talk to you about briefly. The first, and you'll see, actually, that these are a little granular compared to what perhaps they ought to be. And I'll be making a recommendation that these be revisited at some point in the future due to their granularity and the fact that they may not represent adequately the breadth of work being done around digital learning and 21st century learning. So you'll see there that we were able to train 144 teachers and administrators in 21st century practices across the district this past year. That brings those totals across the district to, you can see there, 533 teachers, practitioners, 123 leaders, which have had additional professional learning in leading 21st century efforts in their buildings. And then we did launch an administrator badge for site-level administrators in the last, the last several months. And that has, I believe, 14 administrators that have received 30 hours of professional learning around 21st century learning and leading their buildings in those efforts. A number of challenges that we've had that we're facing. NDE is changing licensure...
Nevada Department of Education.
Nevada Department of Education. My apologies. Yep. Is, is working on changing licensure requirements. So that will have some potential impact on teachers signing up for classes, and we'll have to address that. Another thing is, as you can see, we've got a pretty substantial number of early adopters here, folks that are trained in this, in 21st century instructional methods. And so now we need to take that kind of to the next level in, in having that informed district-wide practice. I'll advance to 1.3.2, which is 21st century instructional practices. And this is, this was an effort that we conducted in the spring of this, this past school year to try to discover if we have been effective in, if the professional learning has been effective in helping teachers to actually deliver 21st century instruction. And as you can see there, we feel we've been quite successful in that. This observed a pretty substantial number of teachers across the district to determine if instructional practices were being practiced. And indeed, they are. So highlights of that are really that we are empowering student 21st century learning through these instructional practices. Again, challenges are very similar to before in that obviously not all of our teachers are trained in these practices. And so it's, it's not necessarily a district-wide practice at this point, but we have structures in place to try to support that. I mentioned that, and just very, very briefly, that these metrics appear to be kind of granular. And just to give you an idea of some of the other, some of the breadth of the initiatives that we're working on as the department or as the Office of Information Technology, and obviously in collaboration with the Office of Academics and other departments across the district. A couple of other brief highlights are that we have, we are supporting one-to-one programs across the district. So our trainer middle school is launching their one-to-one program, actually, this week, as they're beginning that. And so we'll see how those, students enjoy their laptop devices. And the new schools, we'll be supporting those through one-to-one supports for policies and procedures, very much as we're learning from the trainer process. We're supporting online educational services, which are those third-party applications, making sure that we are compliant with federal law, with state law around those things, and also serving teachers to make sure that they have the tools, the digital tools that they are using in classrooms. We have a digital citizenship program that helps us to be compliant with the Children's Internet Protection Act, which mandates that we provide students with digital citizenship education along with internet protection services.
Robert, can you just say a little bit more about that? What's involved in teaching kids about digital citizenship?
You bet. So that's, so we've, basically, we are using a selection of the Common Sense Media resources around digital citizenship, which basically helps students to act appropriately online. So we've selected a number of resources from their selection, which is a national, actually an international program. They're usually considered the best, the best practices around digital citizenship education. So the idea here is that we're working those skills and those, that information into the curriculum rather than it necessarily being a separate piece. So that as students are using technology, we're helping to support teachers in helping students to be acting appropriately online during those activities.
That's wonderful.
We are, and again, just to finish up briefly, just a couple more highlights. We're beginning a computer science and coding cohort at the K-5 level, again, with the intention that those, that it's worked into the curriculum rather than necessarily being a separate piece. piece. Obviously, IT services around the service desk, site technicians and those kind of activities. And then to tie it all together, working on a technology strategic plan that we will be, that will be tying the educational aspect of that to the IT services that we provide much more coherently. So, that's just to give you a really brief outline of the, sort of the gamut of services that we provide and why I think we feel that those metrics may not capture the breadth of that.
Okay. And, and any questions from board members at this point? Trustee Mayor, did you have a question? Okay.
I did.
On this, on this metric, on 1.3.2, Average Competencies Observed, apologies if you said this and I didn't, and I was not paying attention. Who does the observing?
So, this was internally done. This was a number of our teachers on special assignment who, amongst their other duties with coaching and supporting technology in the classroom and 21st century competencies, they actually did a number of formal observations of classrooms with folks that had been 21st century trained and folks that had not. So, they, they were basically observing according to a rubric what students were doing. Really observing students, not teachers, because it's what students are doing that really demonstrates the applicability of 21st century skills.
Great. That's exciting. Any questions on those? Okay. Thank you, Robert. Great.
Thank you.
Well done. And you did say, as you were leaving, you didn't think these metrics fully captured the 21st century learning goals. Are you discovering that other metrics are going to be needed? Go ahead, Superintendent.
Yes, so at the end, I'm going to wrap up and talk about what we learned as a team, things that we are measuring versus, there are better ways to capture data. So, we're going to come back to you with some adjustments, but I will talk about that in the end when we talk about highlights and barriers.
Great. Okay. Good. Thank you, Robert. Well done. Okay, who's up next?
All right. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. My name is Mike Paul. I'm the Director of Professional Growth Systems in our Human Resources Department. I am here to report on Goal 2, Objective 2.2. We have three metrics there to discuss for a few minutes here this afternoon. To start, I'm going to say the first two metrics that I'm going to be talking about, 2.2, 2.2.1 and 2.2.2 are basically the same report that I'm going to give. It's the first one is, has to do with professional learning engagement in the myPGS system for administrators, and the second one is for teachers. And while the two numbers are going to be different, the highlights and challenges and successes are basically the same, and you'll see why as I go through that. So, I'm basically going to talk about both of them within the same context. So, when you take a look at this first one, it's a percent of administrators engaged in professional growth through the myPGS platform. What you'll see there is throughout this 2017, 2018 school year, we used as our baseline, that was the first year that we were able to incorporate all of our professional learning we have in the district into the myPGS system. We had 99% of our site administrators engaged and completing some kind of professional learning within the system. Yeah, yes, we do do evaluations within our system as well, but this is just the professional learning side of it, to where our administrators were completing, not just signing up for, but actually completing a professional learning opportunity within the system. And then for teachers, there, for the same thing, there was 96% of our teachers were completing a professional learning opportunity within our system, so signing up and following through with the completion of an opportunity. So, that was really exciting to see that we have that level of engagement with our staff throughout the district. So, with that level of engagement, obviously, we want to work toward maintaining that level of engagement. A little bit hard to grow from 99%, you know, we need to get those one or two administrators out there that aren't doing what they're supposed to do and get them involved with us for sure, maintaining that level of engagement throughout the next year. Like Robert said, just in this presentation before, it's going to be interesting watching the Nevada Department of Education in the coming year or so, with changing the requirements for licensure with professional development, traditionally taking courses, earning credits for license renewal, they're in the process of mixing some changes with that, and we don't quite know the details yet of how that's going to happen. So, it's going to be very interesting to see how this could possibly affect how professional development is offered and how we might have to adapt our system to incorporate whatever that professional learning is going to look like, because obviously, as we know, a lot of our professional development, professional learning engagement is driven by licensure renewal, and that's just, that's just the reality that we live in. So, it's going to be interesting to see how that's going to evolve with the engagement that we have, and we're going to have to keep close tabs on that to adapt our system. So, again, maintaining the high level of engagement that we have for sure. Some highlights that we definitely are seeing this year is we are now able to incorporate all of the professional learning that we have in our district into one place, and that's been really nice to have with this system. It's nobody's fault anywhere in the district. Before, we had professional learning happening all over the place, and we just weren't able to track that the way that we had wanted to track that. Now, we're able to bring it all together and see everything that's happening all in one place and be able to really keep tabs on what's going on out there. And also with that, and because the evaluation system is a part of the professional learning and they're all-in-one system, we can make explicit connections to the evaluation systems and the professional development and link them together. So, we know that our standards that we're assessing people on and helping them grow professionally are linked to our professional development, making a true professional growth system. So, that's very exciting to see that. And at the same time with that highlight, the challenge is to ensure that we are properly aligning those professional learning opportunities to our evaluation systems. So, our highlights go right hand in hand with our challenges, with the motions, you know, our strategic motions in place of providing the right kind of training for our course developers and for our course approvers to make sure that that alignment is there as well, because it's, it's a very nice opportunity that we have to really take advantage of to make sure everything is in line, and we're helping our employees grow to the greatest extents possible with the evaluation system and our professional growth. So, all of those highlights and challenges are all in one big ball, all rolling together. So, it's, it's really nice and exciting to see how that's been progressing.
Well, congratulations on that great success, too.
Yeah, it's, it's going in the right direction for sure. And then the third one that we have, 2.2.3, is the implementation of the professional learning. So, 15, now this, at kind of sticker shock, I guess, you can see where it says 15% of implementation. I think this takes a little bit of explanation to see. Again, I think with looking at the same kind of highlight of being able to even extract this kind of data from a system of looking at implementation is something to really be excited about. 15%, what, what we're looking at here is not necessarily how teachers and administrators are implementing the professional development. What, the data that we are able to pull from our system is basically when a course creator or a course facilitator teaches a course, they're able to send out a survey about implementation. And what this, what this data is showing basically is the, the students or the learners, are they actually returning that survey? And so, that's the level that people who are actually returning that survey, so it's a low response rate. And then to compound that, not all course facilitators and course creators are even sending that survey out. So, that's why this seems to be such a low number on the implementation side. So, it's a little bit of a, the way that this is worded, and we have some definite work around this one, to where we need to work with our course creators to get the surveys out, and at the same time, we need to rework some of those questions in the survey and do something to look at the actual implementation and use of the learning in the classroom and not just say, are you using what you learned? You know, how, we need to say more along the lines of how are you using it as a, making an impact? Was the learning worthwhile and those kinds of things to get the true meaning of the learning within the classrooms and with our kids, and not just did you, are you doing it or not? And the timeliness of all those. And again, like I said, working with the instructors of the courses to actually get that information out to our staff so, and get it back in a timely fashion, so, because we want to know, are we making an impact? Are the tremendous amount of resources and time and effort are being put into all of this professional learning? And so, we want to make sure that we get a, you know, get the bang for our buck on what we're doing out there, so.
Dr. Paul, can we, I'm sure you have worked with administrators and teachers to ask, how can we make this not a burden on you to provide that information? I, you know, I can see it, staff development days at school, have a conversation about how was it used and have it more globally on a school-wide basis. I don't, I just, I'm imagining another survey and teacher, you know, I can see the eyes rolling from here.
Yeah, we are definitely surveyed to death, that is, for sure.
Yeah. So, have there been any discussions about ideas for ways to simplify that?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we definitely need to take a look at if a whole staff is participating in a learning opportunity, provide information right there on the spot. Part of the thing that we definitely see about implementing, you know, you don't implement what you learn right when you learn it.
Right.
So, a lot of this is, is collecting the data maybe 30 to 60 days after the opportunity, after the learning, after the course has been taken. So, to try to, we need to, to try to figure out, how are we going to go back and ask all of those people, what have you been doing and what kind of an impact was that, did that course have, you know, 60 days after you have taken it? So, that's part of the difficulty, too, of being able to go back down the line and collect that information a little bit later.
I just, you know, in your strategic activities in motion, I would just offer to expand the notion of how that's evaluated beyond a survey, just to see if there are some, you know, less, less challenging or burdensome ways, in addition to whatever surveys are needed.
And that's, I agree with you completely, and that's definitely working with the course facilitators and the course instructors on how they feel depending on what the content is. You know, of course, because there's some courses where we don't want them to implement the course, you know, every special ed teacher teaches, he has to take CPR. And so, we don't want them to implement that content, of course, so, you know, but working with the course creators, you know, they can have the creative ways on how they want to go and, you know, collect data on their, on their content that they've constructed.
Okay. Dr. Feimster.
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, this is really good, and I'm really excited about seeing the results. A question, how are we going to allow for substitutes, because that happens? And, you know, for training, for substitutes? And also for teachers who may come in the first week of school or three weeks after school started? How, how does that training, how will we provide training for them?
So, as soon as a substitute is hired, they have an account that gets created in the system as well, and they can take advantage of all the opportunities that are available. So, they, as soon as they're an employee of our district, and they're, they're in there as well. And there are a couple of classes that they're required to take as part of their introductory to the district, so they're available to everything. And as soon as a teacher is hired, as soon as all of their hiring paperwork is processed, they have an account created as well. And so, they are afforded all of the opportunities that every other teacher is afforded. So, it's, it's as soon as, as soon as everything is processed, their account is automatically created and they can take advantage of everything. Part of the, part of the orientation and part of the induction that they have is on how to use the system as well. And so, right, right up front, we get them right into it and show them everything that they're needed to do to get signed up for the classes they need to take right away. And then through working with their colleagues at school and with their principals and that kind of thing, they find, they can find out about the other things that are pertinent to them and their school that they need to take throughout the year. So, the system is set up to immediately get them in.
Okay. It seemed like they would have like a buddy system or something, because that would really be helpful, because it's...
Well, and brand-new teacher, every single brand-new teacher in our district is assigned a district consulting teacher mentor that takes them through that process right from the very beginning. So, they have that, every one of them is guaranteed to have that.
And substitutes?
Not substitutes, the new hire teachers do, but the, in the substitute, substitutes are shown how to do that during their induction, so.
Trustee Mayor.
You know, in talking to teachers around the district, I find that they are loving this, and they're talking to me about courses and everything. Is there anywhere that I could get a list of the courses that are offered, both to administrators and to teachers? Is it on the webpage someplace? I've looked for it, but I couldn't find it.
It's in, the list is in my PGS to have, you have to have an account to get to my PGS, but I could get that information for you of the courses, for sure.
Could you email me the course list?
Yeah, I could get that for you, for sure.
Because I'm at a disadvantage, not knowing the courses that are available.
There are hundreds of them.
Yeah.
And how about we just put that in the soup's highlights, so each board member can see those courses?
Sure, I could, I could get that to you.
John, you're special, but we're going to share it.
Okay.
I'd have to give it to everybody.
But now, in, do you look at these courses? Do they look at lesson design, things like that?
Yeah, we do. So, every course that is created in the system, it starts with the person who's teaching it, of course, and they create the content and how it's going to lay out, and then it goes through a three-level approval process before it's actually published and people can sign up. So, the, the person, the instructor creates the course and aligns the standards to the course and makes sure the content is there with the standards. And then usually, it'll go to the department supervisor, and then that person reviews that course to make sure that it is aligned and the content is specific to the standards that it's intended to be taught, to approve it, and then it'll go to another approver to make sure that the logistics of the course are where it's supposed to be. So, it goes through a few different sets of eyes to make sure that it's, it aligns to what we as a district are, where we want it to go.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
It looks like there's a lot of people doing extra work. Do they get a stipend for being a mentor teacher or a designer or anything like that at all? Because I, I think to have, just take the missionary thing of teachers, missionary concept of they give away everything for nothing, I think that stipends should be available for these people.
So, a vast majority of the people who are the course creators and the instructors, that's a part of their role in the district is to teach, and if it's like the RPDP people and the CNI workers, the curriculum instruction workers, they teach a lot of those courses.
So, they're not reg, they're not in the classroom then?
A lot of them are. Some of them are classroom teachers that will do this, some of the extra, some of the extra work, but a lot of the instructors, it's part of their job duties to, to do the professional development for our district.
But, you know, it's got to take extra time for this. Either we got to pay a stipend of a quarter or something, you know? Because I really feel that to do that, you get people, not just volunteers, but you get somebody that's productive and wants to do this to improve education in Marshall County, and I think they should be rewarded for that.
Superintendent?
And Trustee Mayor, we're going to talk about that at the end, when I talked about barriers, dwindling resources yet outputs of increase. So, we're actually going to get to the part about resources, because resources tend to be a barrier in us moving forward, because we've been cutting personnel, and so we'll get there when I get to my part. I promise.
You know, I, I really feel that this is someplace where partners in education could come up and be sponsors of a program like this, because I'm thrilled to death, and I really feel that the opportunity here to improve education for individual students by improving the education of teachers is, comes back tenfold. And so, I'm just thrilled to death, but I still think that, you know, the Rotary Clubs or Partners in Education or something, they put in some money to give stipends to the people that are doing this work. I think that shows community buy-in and a thank you also.
That's great.
That's my opinion.
Trustee Mayor, good points. Okay, do you want to continue, Dr. Paul?
That's, that was it.
That's it? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Good work and, and really exciting things to be in motion, so excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up next?
Irene.
Hello.
Volunteer Services, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We practiced this, come on.
You ladies get the most colorful award today. Thank you.
Yes, I think, I actually think we do, don't we?
Very nice. Well, along with Trustee Mayor, whose tie is quite summery.
I thought it was springtime, but when I got out, I found out the heat, it wasn't springtime.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, trustees. Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, trustees, Superintendent Davis, for the record, I'm Inpay, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. Lisa Marie Lightford and I are here today to talk about 3.4.1, which is increasing volunteer hours by 3%, which is part of Goal Three, and with that, I'm going to immediately hand over to Lisa Marie.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, and I'd like to be able to tell you that the last two years have been our best, but last two, last two years have been very challenging. We have eleven thousand seven hundred and five volunteers, and that's down by forty-five hundred or more.
It's still great, it's still great.
Still good. And I'm sad to report that most of the decline in the number of volunteers is actually parents, the parent volunteers. The community volunteer numbers are actually, level or up slightly, and also, we have an increase in under eighteen volunteers, which has been nice. I wanted to clarify what the volunteer figure might include, so I wanted to let you know that it has parents, it has under eighteen volunteers, it has community volunteers as individuals, community volunteers that come in as groups, it has our light-duty employees that we're all putting, also putting to some sort of resourcing, and it includes the nonprofits that we brought in through the years. And it also includes, lastly, the grant positions that have come in that provide people resources. We had volunteer services brought in, over two hundred thousand in grants that are able to provide extra resources for our district. One of them, for example, is the UNR Regions Tutor Program, which brings in about seventeen tutors, they work in ten schools, and, and they do a great job.
That's great.
And that was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that the university granted us. And then we also have a Schwab Grant, which provides, it was fifteen thousand dollars, it provides a resource person for about fifteen hours a week that works on the Kickstart Program, which is one of the financial wellness programs that we support in the district from the Treasurers Office, and I was really proud of the results this year. We've struggled to get claims from parents, and we did over four thousand this year, so we're getting some numbers in there finally. Wanted to also let you know that we supported seventy-one schools, twenty-six departments, and eighty-seven community programs with volunteers. So, all of that is, you know, it's got a figure that the national, a national figure they calculate for Nevada, and we're right at about, with that number of volunteers, we're right at about twenty-five million dollars. And we are really still committed to the challenge, but we are very challenged the last two years, we've gone through a lot of procedure change, and we have gone down in our numbers from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, but we are working very hard to try to retain the volunteers that we have and to find new sources that would come in. Some of those strategies would include, and I think Trustee Holland gave us some ideas too recently, but we're looking at recognition increases, trainings at the school site to try to help the schools bring in some of more volunteers in their area, and facilitating the groups that are already existing. Some of the special recruitment we're looking at is going to sources of recruitment where we know maybe the business can help the volunteer pay for that forty-five-dollar fingerprinting fee, so it limits our market, but it's also been helping us to expand in some different areas. And then we're looking at some partnerships with other agencies. We have, I'm going to be working with Join and a couple of groups to see if we can bring in some training kind of resource programs for people that might be able to help our, our departments.
Great.
And that's pretty much everything.
Can I just say?
Sure, sure.
I think one of the challenges that we are facing is the implementation of SB 287, which is, you know, increases the requirement related to fingerprinting checks. So, as Lisa Marie said, we're doing everything we can around retention, keeping those volunteers that we have. Once we've got them, we want them to feel part of the Washoe County School District family, and we want to keep them, but that is going to be a challenge. Our goal is to increase volunteer hours by 3%. Whether we'll be able to achieve that with SB 287, I, we don't know.
No.
But we're, we're going to try our best.
Okay.
Yeah, we are very nervous about that figure of trying to be 3%. I think I'll be happy if we just sustain it, but I would go out to the trust...
We would be happy too, because that's a very challenging...
It is.
And I go to the trustees, if you have ideas for us, we're open to that. If you have opportunities where you go somewhere and you'd like to drag Dex Thomas or I along, we'll have to recruit wherever there's an opportunity.
That's great.
Thank you.
Do we, do we work with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts at the Eagle level to, to volunteer?
We have brought them in before, they're, they usually choose their programs, and it depends on, you know, what their focus is and what they want to do, but we bring a lot of facility work in that comes in through churches and faith-based.
Trustee Taylor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, it's okay, thank you, Madam President. Great, great job, you've always had such a robust volunteer program. Lisa Marie, I'm, I'm sorry that you're running into some, some of the challenges, because I know there's certainly is a lack of, of you doing what you do, what you've done for so well. My question is, you said we've lost a lot of parents over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Do you, can you, do you, any idea why?
Sure. In two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, there was a new procedure implemented, we lost the NCIC checks, and, and it required schools to do manual sex offender checks and also to enter in the Infinite Campus. I think that overwhelmed the schools, they were unable to add that to their workloads, and at the same time, some administrators were very uncomfortable bringing in volunteers that didn't have the NCIC check. So, that was a big loss, and we did all, I took the community at that time, and we, so we did the, the sex offender checks, and we did implementation in Infinite Campus, and so we were able to maintain the community volunteers, but I think the impact on the schools was very difficult for them. Just one more task they had to do, and so for some of them, they chose to limit, I guess, how many they could bring in. And that'll be, be a challenge too now, for them to try to bring in forty-five dollars for parents that they want to have there once a week, so.
Yep.
I know a lot of schools are already doing little fundraisers for it, trying to make sure they don't lose people.
Yeah, that could, that could be a big barrier. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it, we understand the, the logic of the legislation, it's just, we're, we're trying to keep kids safe, and yet we're, we're putting barriers in the way of their parents being regularly involved, and it's, it's a tough one, very tough. Will you still have AmeriCorps volunteers working?
No, I had AmeriCorps for eight years, which was a little over my, over life time limit for that, and so last year was our last program year, so unless things change, I think other people get turns, is what they said.
Oh, well, I was certainly appreciative to meet them and, and see the great service that they provide.
Yeah, they were, they were great.
And a wonderful opportunity for them as well.
It was, a lot of them went on to great things.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, well, we do recognize what a challenge it is, and as Trustee Taylor said, we're very grateful for the work that Volunteer Services does, and all of our volunteers as individuals, just tremendous. And anything we can do to give that more exposure, you know, having more recognition events, I, you know, I don't know what we can do, but I know...
Appreciate that.
We would all be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, Dr. Deputy, and Deborah, and Ben.
Good afternoon, President Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. For the record, Kristin McNeil, Deputy Superintendent. We're very pleased to be here this afternoon. We have nine metrics that we will be going through in eighteen minutes, two minutes apiece, for Goals One, Three, and Five. First, I would like to do a little shout-out though, we have our Nevada Leads Co. hearts right here with us today, so if they would please stand and be recognized. Stand and be recognized, there we go.
All right.
Yes. A phenomenal group of future administrators for our district, we are in very good hands.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you all for your dedication to our young scholars, thank you.
So, our team today includes myself, and then we have Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer, Dr. Paul Lamarcas, our Chief Ombudsman and Strategies Officer, Dr. Byron Green, our Chief Student Services Officer, and Dr., yes, Dr. Lamarcas, that would be you.
There he goes.
And our Chief Academic Officer, Debbie Byersdorf. So, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer right now.
Thanks, Kristin. Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer, President Simon Holland, and Superintendent Davis, and members of the board, thank you again. Ben and I have the pleasure today to report on metric 1.5.2, College and Career Readiness, and as I was sitting in the audience preparing to come up here, I was thinking that you have heard a little bit about the College and Career Readiness Diploma and SEALS that are, that are, are now in place throughout the state, especially when Dr. Dana Ryan and her crew were here last spring, I think it was, to, to kind of give you a preview. So, so that is 1.5.2, and you see the TBD up in the left-hand corner. The actual codifying of this particular statute following the last legislative session under AB 7 did not happen statewide until late February of this year of two thousand and eighteen. Since then, districts across the state have been working on a way to access information, not only to determine who, what students are eligible for receiving the diploma, but also starting in their freshman year as our students, you know, pick the classes that they're going to take, and as they're, as they're moving through their high school years, knowing what the options there for them are, college and career-ready and SEALS, SEALS of Biliteracy, for example, which I don't have that information for you right now, we'll probably report that soon, but we've broken records again with that this year as well. So, do you want, do you want me to turn it to you, and we'll, no? Okay. Well, I, I, I will share that not only is the state and districts across the state working on the way to, to collect this data, we are also, as a district, we've been working in partnership with IT, Ben's office, my office as well, to figure out how to use going to Infinite Campus and pull this information. So, right now, we are almost finalized that particular process. Our baseline year will actually be, be with the class of two thousand and nineteen, so this, this year's seniors, they're seniors now, class of eighteen, nineteen school year, and we will be back, I guess, in about a year to be able to report to you the number of diplomas and SEALS that were awarded under AB 7.
Can I just ask a question about that? I, I know one of the things we struggled with is how we define a metric for College and Career Readiness. I mean, how, how do we measure when a student is ready? And, and I know the, the SEALS are, are helpful, but I know it's, they're not going to capture everybody. Ben or Deborah, do you want to comment on that?
For the record, Ben Hayes, I, I think we, we need two or three metrics, so this is, I think this is a really, my favorite diplomas have been kind of the Advance and Honors, because that's the way we can tell, we're getting more graduates, but we're also not sacrificing rigor, because that keeps going up. This is even more rigorous and also allows for more career readiness, so I think this will probably be the best one. I think we still need to look with, look at the N-SHE, the Nevada System of Higher Education Remediation Rates, and we're doing in, in our office and in the academic leadership team this year, doing a bunch of kind of institutional research about what do we really mean about the college-ready pathway, so what else can we bring to bear on those data? So, I think between this metric and N-SHE will have a good idea around college readiness, and then another index with ACT and some course-taking stuff will get us a lot farther than we are now. And when, when we were here last time in April, we talked about the N-SHE remediation won't tell the whole story, that could, those data will help shore up those indicators, so we'll have a pretty articulate pathway at that point.
Good, okay, okay. Other comments on that? And I know military is included in the understanding of College and Career Readiness, so service is certainly a viable option and an important one. Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, we're moving forward.
Okay. Yep. So, I get to report to you again, Deborah Byersdorf, on metric 1.5.3, the percentage of students that are in our Signature Academies CTE courses. And this particular metric, there, there's two things that I want to draw your attention to. First of all, the first bullet under Highlights, the Nevada Department of Education has also set some pretty rigorous and ambitious goals around the number of students that are completing a CTE pathway. So, you can see up there for Washoe County by the year 2020, it's over fifteen hundred students, and we're well on the, the way to meeting that goal. Now, students can complete CTE pathways in the tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. This particular metric that we bring to you today, the fourteen percent, is the number of students who graduate having completed a CTE pathway. And just as a quick reminder as well, that can be through one of our Signature Academies, and it can also be through our dual-credit partnerships with TMCC and also the university as well. So, the class of two thousand and seventeen, fourteen percent of those students completed a CTE pathway, and then remember too, that can also, depending on what the pathway is, can give them that completer certificate, that final certificate that they can take on with them post-high school to careers and, and on to especially TMCC and programming up at, workforce development programming at the community college. So, you can see the metrics that we have set for two thousand, for this particular, this last graduating class, two thousand and eighteen, and then two percent increase through there, through the class of two thousand and twenty-two.
So, you're really measuring several things. You're measuring course completers, you're measuring graduates that have a CTE pathway or signature, and then there's participation in a CTE course, they're, they're all different metrics.
Absolutely, and, and again, thinking back to that presentation I referenced earlier, the number of our students that are engaged in the, the clubs, the, the FBLA and that, I know Superintendent Davis was able to travel to Kansas, was it Kansas? Kentucky, sorry, I knew it was a K, Kentucky.
Geography is not on this subject.
Yeah, well, we were just talking about this yesterday. And seeing our, our students compete. But also, we've, we follow closely the number of completers for each Signature Academy, and the number of completers at each high school as well, because especially to reach that ND, or Nevada Department of Education goal of fifteen hundred and fifty students in Washoe County, that's, that, that takes a lot of work. So, you can see we've, we've, we've listed some challenges there. The, we, we still work, you know, Dana does an amazing job, I know you know that, Dr. Ryan, but helping folks, whether it's at the site level and the community level, understand how important career tech education is, and the options that are out there for our students. So, a highlight that I wanted to share with you, because it's happening next week, and we had one that happened at the end of the school year, we're taking buses of school staff, so McQueen High School staff is going one day next week out to the industrial park and is touring Tesla and one of the other manufacturing outfits out there as well, so trying to find as creative and easy ways for our staff, our counselors, our administrators, for all of us to understand the opportunities for students that are just in our area, so it's pretty amazing, so.
Well, I have to say, I attended some of the AACT presentations at the end of last year, and wow.
I know, wow.
Amazing, amazing, students, amazing programming, what an opportunity, and whatever we can do, you know, I will proselytize for that, because it is really, really great. Trustee Kelly, sorry, and then Superintendent Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. And Deborah, I was just wondering, where, where does HUG High School fit? Once we transitioned HUG into, you know, a career technical kind of high school, and once that's online, and do you, do you see that these numbers of this two percent year-by-year growth is going to take off at that point, because we're going to have more space, or do you still like to see a steady increase instead?
Well, definitely would like to see the steady increase, but I think once we are able to dive a little deeper into the plan for, for HUG High School, yes, I, I would suspect and expect that those numbers will just steadily increase. You know, given it's several years out for sure, I think, again, the work that we're doing to, to just educate, you know, folks about the opportunities for students out there definitely will help as well. And then, my goodness, what's available to students in five years, I mean, things we don't even know about today, so.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, the CTE department's doing their work with JAG, Jobs for American Graduates, is one of our partnerships through workforce development, and we're going to come back to you later to talk about JAG, but that is a blossoming program, and our program is different... our program is different from other programs in the state, and so we're super excited about that work also.
Trustee Mayor.
Yes, I was talking to a couple of kids that have cousins in other schools and so forth, and one of the big gripes is the difference between a sixth-period high school and a seventh-period high school in that they don't get the opportunity in a sixth-period high school as they do in a seventh-period high school to get signature courses, remedial reading, whatever. Is there any looking at that and seeing that, well, this is really the way we should do it, is seventh-period high school or keep going along this with split schools?
Well, and as a, and again, Deborah Byersdorf, as a former high school principal, I'm well aware of that, seven periods, more periods, more class sections in the day gives students more opportunities to take more courses. I think, again, I think maybe my first comment might help with that, Trustee Mayor, is that as we dive deeper into the data and how many students at each high school, how each high school's percent of completers for their graduating class, and again, as we look to try to match up with that one with the Nevada Department of Education, I think will help spur conversations around that. I believe, and I don't know off the top of my head, I believe most of our high schools are, have seven periods and I know a few do have six, and there's reasons that schools have gone to different periods as well. But yeah, it's definitely something, and I think it's something I've got up there as a challenge to be aware of that. Yeah. No, 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 that's, I, but yes, it's on the radar.
What impresses me is these kids, they talk and they ask me about the difference because one of their cousins is in one and they're in the other and they see that they get more opportunities than they do. And I don't know is if the shorter periods, not having longer periods, if that doesn't balance it off, that they get more time for English so that they can pass it, you know? And so I don't know if that's a true comparison because the sixth period having longer periods should do a, you know, bang-up job. And I guess the principal of the school would just have to look at that and consider if they really are improving their English scores and their math scores or if another period would be just as good. Because I, the kids, they say, well, how long's your math class and that? So they know, basically, they know what's happening and everything. But I don't know, is there a whole bunch of disparity or three, six-period ones and seven, seven periods?
Again, I don't have that in front of me. I mean, we can certainly get that to you, but I do know that when a, elementary, middle or high, but especially at high school, when you're looking at your master schedule, you have to look at your data, you have to. Is there a concern that students aren't passing their English classes or their math classes and therefore their schedule can then also be taken up by classes or having to repeat because they didn't pass it the first time? So there's definitely that balance there and I think a principal of a sixth-period day might share that with you, that that's the reason why they maybe went that direction. But we can be at the table and help them as well and because we know when kids are engaged and enjoying what they're doing, they will do well in school. So, and CTE is definitely an avenue for that to happen.
And I'll just quickly add, it also has to do, Mr. Mayor, with a school's enrollment and the number of allocations at a school and how the principal is going to be setting up the master schedule and whether it's a block schedule, whether it's a six, sevens. So all of those types of issues have to go into what that schedule looks like.
You have to accentuate the positive. And so these kids are in one, you've got to say, hey, yeah, but look at this, you get more time in this and then you tell the other kids, yeah, this, because they're aware of the differences, they really are.
Dr. Green, are you up next?
I am. Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer, for the record. Early childhood education, as you know, has been, we've been working on for several years to bring the pre-K, which you'd consider maybe the general education part of early childhood, with special education. To remind the trustees, our pre-K, early childhood education is all grant-funded and there are grant criteria for entrance into those programs. For example, typically 200%, you know, at-risk, free reduced lunch and whatnot. The reason I share that is it has been challenging to identify the programming for the pre-K grant-funded and early childhood special education to provide inclusive classrooms, to be able to meet the requirements of both. However, we are working on this to improve these outcomes. We're currently working with the State Department, we'll be bringing Dr. McNeil and Superintendent Davis a plan in the next week or two to do two pilot inclusionary classrooms this next year for 18, 19, with the hopes of expanding that. However, it is dependent upon funding as Superintendent Davis has shared, I know she'll talk about in a bit. So right now, we're looking at the sessions you see there, those are 18 classrooms, and the reason we say classrooms, because you have an AM and a PM session for early childhood, a special education versus pre-K, which is an all-day program. So we look, I actually anticipate based upon this next year of us hopefully increasing this, but depending on the grants, I know the next legislative session, they hopefully will renew that grant opportunity so we can continue early childhood education and maybe even expand it for more students. I also would like in a closing note, at least for this slide, to invite the trustees, we are having an early childhood summit, Tina Springmeyer, our director, and Victor Sherbandi, our executive director, we're looking at revamping all early childhood and we're bringing quite a few stakeholders to the table and that's going to be September 27th and we'll make sure Superintendent Davis gets the information to invite you all.
Great, great, wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay. As we know, the road to graduation starts before candidate. Yep, okay.
With that segue, we're going to shoot up to the middle of the road to graduation.
Okay.
Last August, the trustees asked us to come up with a metric to kind of gauge how many students are ready for high school, ready to access the high school curriculum, in other words, on a college and career-ready pathway. So what we did, the whole academic leadership team worked together, Paul and I particularly, and we kind of figured if a student is at Level 2 on smarter balance, so not necessarily on the college-ready pathway, but accessing it, almost meeting standards or partially meeting the standards, then they can access the high school curriculum. So this metric, what we've come up with was all the students that are leaving eighth grade who are at least a Level 2, remember that's partially meeting standards in English Language Arts, in math and in science, and also are either exited from English Language Services or growing enough in the English Language that they will exit by the end of high school. So if you take all of those students, and remember, they have to have all four of those, not just one or two or the three or the four, and that's 57% of our students, of our eighth graders walking into high school that are able to access it. So you can see there's a little bit of, in this time of more rigorous standards, a little bit of a challenge for the high schools to take them and keep accelerating and move them up for, up more. And that's kind of where we should study, to Mr. Mayor's point about is six better, periods better for a little bit more time on the rigor or is seven periods better so we can do, throw support classes in there and keep them moving along the pathway? That's something that we'll look at in this metrics and in institutional research. So the, I mean, the highlights and the strategic activities that are going, we've had an early warning system, we're kind of trying to revamp it without breaking the old one. And the early warning system kind of tells us, is a child at risk for falling off the pathway to graduation? But that's kind of, I mean, for lack of a better term, I don't know, it's not, it's kind of a, it's a negative outlook. So can we have a positive success indicator system to where, yeah, this child is on track for an honors diploma, if he gets this and this, he's on track for a Tier 1-type college diploma or a wonderful career readiness kind of certificate and that kind of thing. So we're working on stuff like that, all the way down into the pathway. Zoom programming has been a big thing for exiting students. And then the standard challenges, math, I think, is the hardest metric we've looked at and the most difficult, the one that holds people back, school students back from being so-called ready for high school. So as we increase in our math growth and our math adoption, those kids are moving along the pathway and that should get better.
That's a great, that's a great goal, a great objective, really, really cool to be thinking about that, very smart.
This is me again. This is regarding our families' access to resources and this data is taken from the climate surveys, you can see on the slide, from eight questions. We do have some concerns regarding this data, is it really reflective of what our families are able to report in regards to access to resources? So within the last, I want to say, four to five months, Superintendent Davis has been working with Delisa Crane in our Family School Partnerships Department and is engaged with our Council of Family Engagement, our COFI, who works with our Family Engagement Department. And Superintendent Davis has asked them to work together and for the first time to create a family engagement index where we could really look at each school individually. This metric right here, we're very proud and happy based upon the results, but it's shown as a district-wide and we know that most of our family engagement varies based upon the schools themselves. The challenge that we face is, I don't believe there's any index that's able, across the country right now, so we'd be the first ones looking at this, to be able to see. So we do request, or we're taking it to Superintendent Davis, that we'd like to hopefully have that completed by December and then maybe create a baseline next year, working with our Accountability Department and our Family School Engagement Department.
That's great. I know 88% is not as good as you would want, but it sounds pretty outstanding. I think it's laudable, so, and I also understand that it is probably 60% some places and 100% others, and we get that. So we know there's a lot of work to do, but I just, I want to compliment everybody on that.
Thank you. The next one is in regards to participation at parent university. This is actually funded through multiple sources. Obviously, this is a partnership with the K-12 Education Foundation that provides funding for parent university, the district has as well. Part of this metric, just like the last one, is our Family School Partnership supports this, but these initiatives and this work is really led by our principals and our teachers who connect with families every day. We can provide the resources and supports, but the schools themselves identify what parent university courses will be offered, if they will be offered and for how long. We are, this data is based upon exit surveys of families who do participate and you can see the unduplicated amount there. We should have the data from the current 17, 18 school year, but our Accountability Department does not compile this data set, it's actually through a partnership with the social entrepreneurs, that's through the K-12 Foundation, they do that work for us. So again, I know that Superintendent Davis will talk about this, we don't anticipate this metric increasing just due to the funding cuts the district is, has made to parent university and the possible loss based upon the K-12 Foundation as well.
Well, I, similarly, I attended the graduation as other trustees did and it was really inspiring. I mean, I, oh, there wasn't a dry eye in the place, seeing those parents getting up to accept their awards, that was, and what those families go through. I mean, oh my goodness, these are, these are not families that are just, you know, sitting around playing chess in the evening, they've got two jobs, multiple jobs, they're, I was just so impressed with all that work. And a big thank you to the K-12 Foundation too, for all of their support for that program. I, I'm sorry that we haven't got more resources to dedicate to it because I know it's just a wonderful way for families to support their children, so thanks for everybody's work on that.
Okay, we're moving to chronic absenteeism, I think that both Dr. Green and Mr. Hayes may have some comments to add, I'm not sure. So in terms of some of what I'd like to highlight, well, I'll start with the data. There was a change in the last legislative session that affected our definitions of chronic absenteeism. You do have our baseline for 17, 18 at 19%, and then you see our targets in subsequent years, 17% for next year, 15% the year after. One thing I would really like to highlight has been some of the cross-agency work that's been led by Rochelle Mario and facilitated by Rochelle. This involves multiple departments within the school district, but it also involves working with juvenile services and social services, and she does a tremendous job in supporting these families. Similarly, challenges, there are a variety of barriers for student attendance and working with families that are struggling, it's difficult. And so trying to problem-solve, working with other agencies on how we can best support a family, it's an ongoing challenge that we have to get better at helping resolve. One of the strategic activities that I think is very worthwhile is in this past year, Ms. Mario and Ms. Schaefer have integrated some of the training around MTSS and interventions around attendance. And the more we can have schools think of attendance through kind of the framework of multi-tiered systems of support, I think will help us better support children because oftentimes, these children are also struggling academically as well as behaviorally.
Another positive approach, we're trying to look for chronic absenteeism, is we have been working with Renoun for the last several years to identify telemedicine in our schools. We know the role of the school districts, obviously, to educate, but we have access to many of the students who need healthcare who may not have access to it. We are working with Rochelle and two of our schools, Reed High School in North Valley, to do a pilot this next year with a mobile cart where students, if they're coming in ill, based upon some of acute issues that they may have, whether it's lice, whether it's basic infections or whatnot, that they can meet and service the student right then and there, get the parents online, the parent does not have to leave work or they're home, they can connect with a doctor. And if they don't have health insurance, we go through Northern Nevada Hopes and some other agencies for that.
Wow.
Part of that research, which we're really excited about with Rochelle's department, is we at this point have not identified some of the chronic absenteeism with possible health issues. We know that chronic absenteeism is very complex, it's not just students who don't maybe want to come to school, it could be academic, as Dr. Mark has shared, it could be behavioral, it could be medical. There's so many issues and it's very, very complicated when you provide that wrapped around in case management, but we're actually very excited this next year that we can start looking at the data to see how many of our chronic absentee students maybe need medical assistance that we can even provide at some of our campuses. So I think that's a really bright star based upon our Health Department and also our Intervention Department.
Excellent. That is really groundbreaking, that's huge, very exciting. Well, and I think it just symbolizes that the district is trying to recognize that kids aren't bad kids because they're not showing up for school. They've got issues in their lives, there is a complex system that they're dealing with that's making it impossible for them to get there many times, so. Trustee Mayor.
You know, too, it helps if people in the community, like me, walking around, since I'm an old geezer, but these kids, ask them why they're not in school. And I say, why aren't you in school? And give them a tough thing, and I want to thank you for sending me the summer school schedule, because at Deer Park, I got two kids that were just sitting there passing time, and I got them to go to summer school and each one got a credit.
Oh, that's great.
Each one. And you know, they need somebody that cares a little bit. And if you're at the ANW or whatever and there's a bunch of kids, how come you're not in school? And sometimes that works to, to get these kids on the straight and narrow, but I'm so happy at, and you know how I've been harping about summer school and the intercession and everything, but this year, the summer school selections, and I'm talking about high school, was tremendous. I mean, you had it everywhere, a guy couldn't say, oh, I can't get there because I live in North Valley, you know, I can't get to HUG or something. I ventured to say, it's available to these kids anywhere. And what a better way, if you're not doing anything anyway, go for a half a day and get a credit, you know? But this absenteeism and stuff is a real problem and I don't know if this is true, and maybe you guys can tell me, but if, say, somebody moves in the middle of the night and you, they're still on your roll until they check in in Sacramento, and if they don't check in anywhere, you've got to carry them all the way to 12th grade. So that's got to hurt us in a way for accountability because here's these kids and they're not getting counted every day for being our students when really they're not. And it's a shame that we can't put the tracking device on. And it's a shame that we can't put the tracking device on all the kids that move, but I bet that happens a lot, because in my neighborhood, I know that people move, you know, for different reasons, and I know checking in with the school's the last thing on their list.
Ben Hayes, for the record. Accountability-wise, there are some triggers in the student information system that will, ten days whereabouts unknown and unenrolled after twenty days, so that we don't, wouldn't have to carry them, but it is, it is something that takes up resources. And I will say, as kind of a research nerd, that this strategic plan metric is more related to everything else in the strategic plan than probably any other metric. Math reading, English language development, engagement, and everything else. So I think this is one of our important metrics, and we have a big research agenda with this team and obviously everyone else, and how we can dig into the certain parts of it. The attendance policy is going to change this year, it has changed, and that's going to need a lot of information behind it. I know Kristen and the Communications Department are working on making sure educators, families, and students all, all attend to it and understand it, and it is going to mean a lot of makeup work, and we're kind of working, the school district is working to make sure that that's the best, but misinstruction is going to be important. So, the work that Byron was telling you about and Dr. Lamarcus was telling you about is incredibly important. I'm stuttering because I can't get a picture of Trustee Mayor riding around with a GPS and a line bike, getting kids to summer school.
I love those line bikes. There's always two on my corner.
Oh, Trustee Feimster, did you have a question?
Oh, I, I just wanted to add to what Mr. Mayor was saying. I, we do have a problem with chronic absenteeism, and I just, it is really, really significant. I know Mr. Mayor, like myself, we get the calls saying, "So-and-so is home, what are we supposed to do?" And it, the kids are just sitting home. Parents know it. The people in the community are the ones who are going to be your biggest resource. And years ago, we ran a program just where we had the community people just calling us, letting us know that the neighbor next door doesn't go to school. They are the ones who know, not us. So if we could just run those PSAs, I mean, they were free, and it got a lot of students back in school, and I think we have to go back to some of those things that really work. You don't know who the neighbors are. It's the people who are in the neighborhood who knows that the neighbor next door is not going to school. They see them running to the store, running, you know, playing after a certain hour, because they're very savvy with their outside hours. And I think we have to go back to some of those old strategies of involving the people in the community. Let them know that they are a big resource for us because they will call if they had a hotline. We, we used to have big signs up outside, "Call the parent hotline and report a student." They did it, and it worked. So I, I think we need to just go back to some of those things that really, really worked. Parents want to be involved, and sometimes they're frightened. However, once they know that they're helping us and helping students, they will do it. So I think we have to go back to some of those because we have a lot of students who are not in school, and I echo what Mr. Mayor is saying. And I will stand on the corner with him a couple days.
And just super quick, as we move into 5.12, just so you know, Trustee Feimster, our Communications Department has a very robust program, working with other, other agencies. So the Northern Nevada Reading Coalition, also, we have the United Way working with us. So the public service announcements that you mentioned, that's all part of the, of the package as far as making sure that, that not only our families and students understand the importance of being in school, but also our community understands the importance of being in school. Absolutely.
At the risk of taking another minute, I know you want to say something. I think this will be, this, we're all excited about it, you can tell, this will be where the district innovates a lot over the next couple of years. The Grants Department is pretty, pretty intense about going, finding different ways. Rochelle, Dr. Green didn't talk about this, but Rochelle and some other folks in the, in the district, including my team, are working on some research-based, family-friendly text messaging to students that are missing school. So there's a lot of stuff going on that we're excited about.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for the good discussion.
Okay, so we'll move to the next indicator, 5.1.2, and this is around disproportionality. And this one, sometimes it makes a lot of intuitive sense, but it's very difficult to represent. So when we think of something being proportional, the proportion of the total population that a particular group makes ought to equal the proportion of the program that that population makes, okay? And that can be very difficult, again, to represent. So what, what Mr. Hayes and the Accountability Department has done is represented disproportionality using these relative likelihood ratios. And so what you have here is you have some program areas down the left-hand column, so gate, students with IEP, high school sports, suspensions, and then across the top, you have our different sub-populations, and in the bottom, it's a similar table with some of the special populations. If we were doing perfectly, which you can't do, especially with proportions, every cell entry would be a 1.0. All right? So when you have a value that's less than one, then what you know is the group is underrepresented. When you have a value that's over one, you know the group is overrepresented. So for example, if we take the African-American column, we see that with respect to gate enrollment, they are significantly underrepresented. With respect to IEPs, they are significantly overrepresented. With respect to sports, NIAA sports, they are slightly underrepresentative, underrepresented. And then with suspensions, discipline, they are significantly overrepresented. So, one of the other problems that we have, and some of you were educators in the district, and probably all of us were around and aware of No Child Left Behind, and the hundred and twenty-eight different ways that you could get into trouble with that accountability system. Our goal is to color-code this so that we know when we're making progress, or we're losing ground, or we're staying even with any one of these particular groups and programs. But we can't make too much out of one particular cell. So while in the future we will be color-coding this, we are also going to be coming up with a way so that we could represent sort of generally whether we are improving with disproportionality, whether we're losing ground, or whether we're remaining the same. And of course, what we want to do is make improvements. In terms of some highlights, and you probably will have some questions, we have a bunch of highlights. I think, for me, one of the highlights, given my, the perspective from my office, is some of the work that Ms. Young and the Equity and Diversity Team is doing. We're training all new teachers with Equity 101. All of leadership is being trained. I know the board is being trained, and this is critical. This is critical to, to really get people to understand what it takes to be inclusive, to differentiate, to engage all students. This is requiring, I mean, in terms of a challenge, it requires all of our departments to collaborate. We have to collaborate with curriculum instruction. We have to have materials that are diversified. We have to be able to make education engaging and relevant for each individual student. Until we can do those sorts of things, we are going to continue to struggle with disproportionality. But I do, I do, I am very optimistic in terms of the future with respect to some of the work that is going on around equity and diversity.
Comments, yes, Dr. Feimster?
Thank you. It's great to hear what you're saying, Dr. Lamarcus. I really appreciate it, because that suspension rate just is so glaring. It's always been glaring. But the first thing I would say as an educator is, that's just training. That's training. I rem, I could just quote some of the times that teachers wanted students, African-American students suspended. He looked at me as if he was going to hit me. Okay, that's, you don't suspend because someone looks at you as if he or she was going to harm you. So a lot of that goes back to training. So I hope the training is coming from somewhere, and I hope someone is looking at the suspensions, reading why the students are suspended, as I think the Superintendent in Minnesota is doing. She's looking at every single African-American suspension. And because she's done that, there has been a significant decrease in the number of, I would say, males of color, not just African-Americans. And I think we have to, you just have to zero in on it, and it can make a difference. And again, the training with potential new principals, just, just a lot of training. I hope we're looking at it, that's, that's all, because it's not great when parents call the NAACP, because that's the first thing they do. They don't want to hear it because they've been hearing it for too long, and it's still a problem. I'm just happy that you guys are putting it in black and white and knowing that it is glaring and praying that we can make a difference. That's, I, it's important.
Thank you. Good comments. Yes, Trustee Mayor?
Yes. You know, we, we had a slam about leadership. Our, our leadership team cares. And what you've been saying here about being excited and stuff like that, that hits home. Because if you're, you're caring, you're loving, you look at diversity as a problem, you look at absenteeism as a problem, and you want to solve it, that's leadership. That's all leadership. And some of those people that said things like, you know, the, this and that was due to the lack of leadership, I think you guys do a tremendous job. And, and by this, I can see that you've really, it hurts you to see one below one. Personally, it hurts you. And that's, you know, to go in to make something different, change, if you don't have that attitude that you want to change it, it's not going to change. And I, I, I think the world of you people, and I think that we're in better shape because of our leadership team.
Good, John.
Oh, thanks.
And with that, our very last metric that we have up here is our survey composite measure. So just very quickly, this has to do with, as you know how important it is to get perspective from our students, our teachers, our principals, and our parents. And that's exactly what this particular metric speaks to. So some of the highlights are around student engagement, the relationships at schools, and how important those relationships are, the perceptions from students as far as how safe they feel at school, and then social-emotional well-being. And we also have, if you want to turn a little bit of that?
So what this measure, and this, again, last August, the board asked for a kind of a composite measure of survey items, getting around these, in what sense, or how are students, families, and educators feeling about the district, communicating with the district, and being engaged? So what these, these are from the spring of 2018, so this last April-May. These are fresh numbers, and what the data show, it's one-year-only, students are reporting being engaged at about fifty-eight percent. As we've reported to this board before, that goes down from elementary to middle to high school. And it's something that'll be interesting to watch over the next several years as kids that are used to being in, in, in groups and doing collaborative work kind of continue through into the secondary years. Families, and President Holland, you said it earlier, the, the high kind of endorsement of the families is nice to see. We'd like the response rate to be a little bit higher, as Dr. Green's concern said, but that's, that's a nice to see. And staff is about eighty percent. Looking at positive relationship with the school community, numbers are similar for families, a little bit higher for students, roughly equal for staff. And feeling safe, and this is one that gets affected every year by the media, and it dropped this year, but still eighty-two percent for students. Obviously, we want that to be a hundred across the board there. Similar for families and a little higher for staff. And then, social-emotional health, you've seen a lot of presentations by Superintendent Davis and Ms. Schaefer on the importance of social-emotional learning, social-emotional competencies. We've come up with, and I want to kind of give a shout-out to Dr. Laura Davidson in my office, a really strong measure. It's still a survey, but it's a really strong measure that can actually kind of give, give you some variability, for lack of a better term, in, in kids that have high competencies and lower competencies. And you can see, there's, there's a lot of interesting, just in these, interesting data just in these competencies alone. So if you look at self-awareness of emotions, it's roughly seven out of ten kids, but self-management of emotions drops down to fifty-two. So there's a little bit of a gap there that we, we can pay attention to in the district, and that goes into our challenges. Again, that, the pathway, we see students getting more and more disengaged, and that goes to what some of what Dr. Lamarcus was saying, better and more diverse and more engaging curricular materials, instruction, belongingness, and all of that will help with all of these, not just among our students, but also among our families and certainly our educators.
And just in closing, one of the things that we're working on after feedback from our schools is that Ben and his team will now start putting the survey out in November rather than the spring so that we can get a better return rate on those as well.
Good. Great. Okay. Questions? Any questions? Yeah, almost a clean break. No, that was great. We asked, we asked our questions along the way. It's just extremely impressive, the, just the thoughtfulness, the deliberate and intentional focus on things that matter, and, and I want to echo Trustee Mayor's comments, just great job. Thank you all so much for how sensitive and committed you are to making sure the right things happen for our, for our kids. So, thank you. Soup, are you on?
Yes, I am on.
Okay.
Hi, Mike. So first of all, I want to thank the leadership team, area superintendents, executive directors, assistants to those people, like when you drill down to the organization, all the employees in our organization that has helped make this work for our students. So, thank you, leadership team. Erica, is Erica still here?
Yep, she's here.
Erica, thank you. I know it is a challenge to work with the leadership team because we can go and go and go and go and go, but we go to get the best answers for students and our organization. So thank you for facilitating that and giving us the opportunity to bounce ideas and talk about what a good metrics have been, and maybe that's probably not what we were really looking for. So it's been a continuous improvement process for us, and, and we really all do like this model of the work that we do because it truly measures what we're doing in our district and for our students. So I'm going to start with some highlights, and first of all, proud of the work that our team is doing around student voice. In this Friday Minute or next year, or next week's Friday Minute, we're going to send some links and some videos out about student voice from our kids that have been circulating nationally unbeknownst to me, but they are super, super amazing. And if you remember our one student who's been a part of our budget town hall meetings, she does a video about student voice, and she, they actually go into her home and you see her little sister, like when you see the thing, you're just like, "Oh my goodness." So I'll, I'll try to make sure that the board members get that link also, but it really speaks volumes around the work we do and how kids view the work, right? Because we might think we're doing one thing, and the kids might view it differently, but to hear the voice of the students and, and to tell us where we're not doing such a great job, and if anybody's been on the Student Advisory Board, they have no problem telling you if it's not good. So the value of student voice has been amazing. I want to specifically thank Jason Trevino and Catherine Louden, who sit on the Governor's Safety Task Force, and I sit on that task, task force also, but they do a lot of work on the committee work. A lot of things are happening with that, and we're going to come out with some recommendations for the governor. But one of the things I think we all learned during this process is when you think about what's happening in the vat around school safety, Washoe really is ahead of the curve. A lot of the things, the ideas that are coming up, we're kind of like, "Yeah, we, we did that, we, we did that." And so we get to give some good feedback, but also there's some things we learned that we can do better. So lots of work around school safety, but knowing that the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission has been an integral part of this work when the board created that, so a very positive thing for us. Construction is well underway. And I was dying on top of the roof. It was hot outside. I was like, "How are they doing this in this heat?" But we committed to the voters that we would be transparent about the work with WC1, and we put up, "Here's what our needs are, here's what we're going to do." And part of that work is showing people that here's what we're doing. And so in the last three or four weeks, I've been out at schools just doing school construction because there's no school going on, right? So don't have to visit the classrooms, but from cranes, being So if you follow me on Twitter, hint, hint, you can see some of these videos and some of these pictures. But still, just nice to hear the workers, because as we go out and talk to workers, one of the things we talk about is, do you have any kids in the district? And if they don't have kids, it's grandkids or cousins' kids. There's some connection to the people who are doing the work, and to the work that's happening in our building. So very grateful for that. And I know Pete isn't here tonight, but it's the first time we have to build three schools in one year. And it is, like, man, it's crazy, just the volume of work that is happening in the district. Got to see the new lunchroom at Desert Skies. And it's interesting just to see the groundwork for it as it comes up. And we'll be doing some things with drones to see it come together. But to build three schools in one year is just simply amazing. So Capitol Projects, thank you for that work, and, and thank the Oversight Protection Committee. Lot of work going into that, so we're really proud of that. We talked about priority-based budgeting, new for the district, and, and Mark was really nice about how he said it, but sometimes it's tough, right? Because we have to, you're moving the cheese on people, and it's kind of tough, but we really do come together to get good answers for our students. We had a successful special ed conference this year, and when we talk about that conference, one of the things, which was wonderful, was so many vendors came out to support our families. And one great story out of that is, one lady says, a grandparent said, I couldn't teach my grandson how to ride a bike. Because that's, like, we don't teach kids how to ride bikes in school, believe it or not, right? But one of the vendors had an opportunity for that, and that's what we're trying to do, connect people with outside resources. But a challenge in that is that we don't get lots of people to come on Saturday, even though it's tons of people, e- even though the number is growing, we would like to see more of our families come out to that. And with that being said, I want to shout out to the special ed advisory panel, the SEAT panel, has been doing some great work with special ed, and I'm not going to get into all those developments, but when Dr. Green presents in two weeks or three weeks, or whenever he comes back to present, you're going to hear a lot of cutting-edge stuff, I think, for a district to be doing, but the partnership with the community is great. And we're doing some amazing things that we're going to try to help kids and families, and how to talk to your kids, and how to help families navigate the pathway through an IEP. Because we know it can be intimidating as a parent, because I can tell you, my kid's IEP was 100 pages long, but if you, but I know what I'm doing, right? So, but think about a parent who doesn't. And how do we support those families as they navigate those waters? Let me see, social emotional learning, Ben touched on this a little bit, but great work is being done around this nationally. If you follow up on the Friday Minute, you see some of the good work. We actually got to testify to some of this in DC, and a lot of good work being done, so we're really proud of that. Family School Partnership and Coffee attended some of their meetings, and they are doing some great work around a family engagement index, because we want our families to feel welcome in our schools. And what's nice about that is, when you have a committee doing the work, they have lofty ideas, and then there's the reality of what that looks like with the principal in the building. So there's principals on that committee, too, to talk about that. So there's a balance in that work. We know it's going to be a challenge in ways, but we're talking about when you walk into the school, do you feel like you belong there? Does it feel like it is a space where you are welcome? And sometimes when we, we think that as a principal, I've always like, oh yeah, that's my school. And then someone says, hey, by the way, did you notice, all your signs look like this? And it's some of those little things that we can do to ensure that our families feel more welcome in our building, and hopefully they come up with an index that is family-friendly as we hope. Letters went out to all our high, did the letters go out yet, Ben? They didn't go out yet? They're going out. Okay, so we are sending our annual letters to every high school student. I think when you think about all the work, can I borrow this, trustee mayor? Thank you. All the work we do around absenteeism, getting kids, CT, Chris, all this work, right? All this work starts when they enter the doors. And, and as trustee Simon say, we always say, we start the work to graduation at pre-K kindergarten, but when they get into high school, it's, it's a big shift. And so we annually send these out, magnets, and they have QARs on them. So this is this year's magnet, and if you have a senior in high school, you'll be getting one of these. But every year, we improve upon this. And this year, in the QAR, we actually got into, what does it take to get to college? Not just NRS, what it takes to graduate, but also what does it take you want to get into college, and talk about where they can get resources around that. And this year, we actually will send letters to every kindergarten student, right? And it's really funny, because Ben's like, oh, do you think a kindergarten's going to understand this? And of course, we giggle, because really, it's for the family, but we want to introduce our young scholars to the road to graduation, and it starts in kindergarten. So each family will be receiving one of those letters as we continue to improve on engaging a variety of families. Let me see where else we are. I have a long list, huh? Our priority on equity and diversity. As we talk around this, work around disproportionality, and thank you, trustee mayor, for acknowledging the staff's work on this, because I'll tell you, we have hard, rigorous conversations that are uncomfortable. And part of that being uncomfortable is because we have to attack ourselves when we see that we have policies and procedures that create inequitable practices for our students. And that's hard to own, because we're saying we are doing some of this to ourselves. But there are teams in place right now, looking at curriculum, looking at course offerings, and really taking a deeper dive into ensuring that we have equitable practices for all children, regardless of the color of their skin, socioeconomic, if they have disabilities, like what are the barriers that we self-impose that we don't realize that don't get kids to the finish line? So there's committees working on that. And okay, and I always forget the name, is it the Equity Access? What's your committee's name? The Task Force, I'm sorry. Thank you, Task Force, that's doing a lot of work around that. So when you look at the disproportionality, and we look at, say, so do we not really have ELL kids engage? That's not normal, right? Like, so, like, what are the challenges or the barriers that are in place that we can't find students? Because we know that we have students that are successful. Or if it's just around sports, why are kids not engaged in sports? Is it a cost thing? Like, what are the things academically, socially, that create these barriers for ourselves and our districts? So we are working hard, and I can tell you, it is not, it's not easy work. We will not get there tomorrow, because we know this is over time. When we look at our equity plan, with our equity department, part of it is, here's the great plan, but it takes people to implement a plan. And so if you have not a lot of people to implement a plan, it takes a longer time to get to every individual in the organization. And we believe equity and diversity is not just about schools, it's about departments, right? It's about the operational side, as well as the academic side, so that people feel comfortable when they walk through this door, whether they speak English or not. Like, what are the things that we do to ensure that the district is providing equitable practices for all students? So work being done on many fronts. I hope you've heard nuggets of like, I was like, man, you just threw them out a nugget. We can't get deep into that right now, but a lot of things being done. With that being said, it's hard to continue the level of work when we cut funding. When we talk about increasing amounts of opportunities for individuals in particular departments, yet we cut the personnel that implements it, it becomes a challenge. So as we look at those metrics, sometimes it might be just to maintain versus to grow. And I'll give some examples. For instance, Family Partnerships doing some great work, but as we looked at budgets, we could not add people to their budget, right? And then sometimes we took a person away. When we look at equity and diversity, they don't have a large department, but we want to train the entire district. So when we look at those metrics, we have to be cognizant of the amount of work we are putting on people to grow or increase when we're taking things away from them to do the job. So we will come back to the board and talk about some of those, are these reasonable for us to get to? Because in some cases, maintaining might be a really good metric, as you look at volunteer services. Some of that's around the law, right? Dr. Taylor asked, well, what's happening with parents? Well, if I got to feed my family or get fingerprints, I'm feeding my family, right? And so that's a barrier, not necessarily that we create it, but there is a barrier around that, and we have to be cognizant of that. Also, we learned that some of the metrics just didn't, they sounded great when we did them, but then in actuality, didn't quite work out, and so there's better ways to capture that data, and we will bring that back to the board for approval. Gosh, did I get some, I think I blended all my barriers in my highlights altogether. Overall, I think the district is in a great state. When we think about where we were a decade ago, and then you look at continuous improvement process, we're doing good work across the board. There's room for improvement in every district, until you can say 100% of the kids are walking across, there's room for improvement. When we talk about not having all families engaged, there's room for improvement. But we are still doing wonderful work, and I think that's compliments to an amazing leadership team. Yesterday, I walked into the chief of staff's office, and I actually said, I am tired, because I think I talked to every chief, and my pile started here, and it went down, and then by the time I left, it was back up here, whether it was Ben talking about risk indexes, Kristen was talking about, okay, we got this going on, like, everybody was telling me all these things. Then I had the finance office in, and Pete was talking, and I was like, man, we are doing so many things, and people are thinking out of the box also, how to get it done, in the constraints of the resources that we provide. So I just want to publicly thank the team again, and also thank the board. Like, it takes all of us as a team to look at the district and acknowledge where we're doing great work, but areas of improvement for us, as we continue to look at the strategic plan to do what's best for our students and our community. So that's my highlights from the superintendent.
Right, thank you.
Did I, did I reach my timeframe? Did I do okay? Okay.
Thank you, superintendent. And I know we echo the, the great kudos to the staff for this good work. And again, thank you, Erica Olson, for really helping to guide this, because it is a very difficult process, and you all are doing just wonderful work. And it sounds like some items will be coming back to us, so we'll look forward to those action items. But I appreciate that everybody has kept their word that we would come back on the schedule of quarterly presentations, and I think this is really informative, and I, I certainly appreciate it, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board. Did you have something else, superintendent? Okay, trustee mayor?
You know, I think we ought to give a round of applause for our audience. They've been here since 2:00.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Well, that concludes that item, and quickly to, again, thank you, all of you, for your participation in all of this. Board reports, does, I'll, I'll just put it out there, rather than going around the table, does anyone have something that they would like to share under board reports? Vice President Raymond?
I just wanted to share a little bit about a conference I attended. As a member of the Department of Education's Council on Family Engagement, I was able to attend the National Family and Community Engagement Conference in Cleveland, Ohio, two weeks ago, and was in great company with a wonderful group of our Washoe County School District leaders, and teachers, and social workers, and early childhood education group. So it was a very valuable experience for me. I think we, I felt like my experience in this conference covered kind of some really high-level overview of family engagement and the challenges and, and strategies included in that, but also getting pretty specific with a few areas, like specifically how to engage refugee families in your community. And so it was very interesting and valuable, and excited to share with the state council a lot of what we went over at the conference. And then I also attended the Nevada After School Summit last week, where we talked about the opportunities for further collaboration and partnerships in the community around after school programs, and what a statewide network could do to support that in our district.
Great. Well, thank you for representing the district and flying the flag for us, for the board, and really, and to everyone who went to that conference. And, and I know you've been traveling too, superintendent. I know you take time away from your family to do that, and we're very grateful for the sacrifices you make to, to help us in that way. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to let everybody know that Washoe County School District and the US Forest Service are co-hosting a town hall meeting to talk about Arrow Creek Middle School, and that's going to be August 9th, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Hunsburger Elementary School. So anyone that wants to know more about how that is progressing, and wants to give feedback or comments, please attend.
Great. Thank you for that. Anything else? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I, I think you got the notice that Dottie's retiring at the end of December, and I think we ought to take time to write her a note and do something collective, because she's going to be hard to replace.
Yes, she is.
If you know somebody that could replace her, boy, bring that person down. We want to meet her.
Or him.
But it's going to be a big loss for us as a state school board association.
That's true. Those are shoes that will be hard to fill.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Superintendent, and thank you for your great sort of combining the report from the last agenda item with, you know, everything good that's been going on. And I don't want to fail to, to really thank you for the great leadership of the district to get those great results that we've been hearing about.
Thanks, and I'll be really fast. So next year, you failed to mention that, we're actually hosting, we're the host for the National Family Engagement Conference.
Oh, boy.
It will be here, so you will have an opportunity to participate in that. Just want to say, we did have new school principals meeting. The new, the new principals are super excited about the work for new schools that they're doing, and you saw the Capitol Projects met with our senators and representatives in DC about things that are pertinent to Nevada specifically, and also some things that are global nationally, around what's happening in school districts. And then I'm just going to give a shout out to our kids who competed in Nationals at Skills USA in Kentucky. I was all over the place in Kentucky, including a water ride with the kids, but we had kids placed nationally, we had females placed nationally. So if you follow me on Twitter, I tried to take tons of pictures. Simultaneously, we had FBLA in DC competing. So people probably thought I was in DC and Kentucky at the same time. I was like, send me pictures, so I could tweet them out. But the work doesn't stop just because the calendar stops. Our kids are still doing good work, our teachers are still doing good work, and so super excited about the work that we're doing in our district for our students.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Future agenda item requests? I have a couple. Does anybody else have, have future agenda item requests? And I did mention these to the superintendent and chief of staff. And I think in addition to getting information from the staff directly on the teacher vacancies before school starts, I thought it might be good for us to hear that first, what would it be, August 14th would be our first regular meeting in August, that we could hear about how we're doing with, with staffing of teacher positions. I also talked to the superintendent about, you know, we, we have answered a lot of questions from the public about how schools will be, the operations of our new schools will be funded, and thought it would be a good idea to bring that back for discussion here at the board meeting, rather than just through our, our little board, our budget forms that we did, but have a discussion about how operations of the new schools will be funded as a board discussion item. And then I wanted to ask whether we did receive information about the Capitol Funding Protection Committee deferring action on the auditor, and I, I think there might be an opportunity for us to have some discussion about that at the board level, just to hear what the concerns were, and then maybe develop some additional direction that we could provide to that committee, if, if staff thinks that's appropriate. So you can tell us whether that's appropriate, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, we will meet again on Tuesday, August 14th, here in the administration building. And with that, we are adjourned.